It's February the 23rd. It's a county commission regular meeting, and it's my honor to have my pastor, Pastor Jason Link has come up this morning, and pray for us.
Honored to be here, God bless all of you. Just wanted to, just off of your prayer today. And Lord, we thank you today. We give you great praise. You are God, and you are good. Thank you for loving us the way that you do and teaching us to love. But I pray over this meeting today, Lord, that your wisdom will be so real here. As these men and women make choices, Lord, that direct our county, Lord, I pray that would be the right choices directed by your spirit. But I pray for each and every individual in this building I'm watching right now, that they would feel and understand your love and your grace like they never have before. But I pray an end to COVID in our culture and our society, Lord, and the people who've been affected by it. Lord, you are a God of miracles, and may the miracles start with us, right here in this county. I thank you for the United States of America, that you are such a, you're such a great God that loves this country. I pray that they love you back, and that we would always embrace you. But I pray for Brevard County, Lord, to be a beacon in our culture, a beacon to the world, Lord, that sees these people are different, these people are innovative, and they're doing things the right way. Lord, I praise you, I give you thanks. Today, I want to say to the situations that are going on in our country, Lord, that you would just have peace on your people, or there would be an end to racism, or they'll just be the ones that help and lead in that process. And we give you all the praise, we give you all the glory, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. We have a quorum, so I'm going to call this meeting to order.
Please stand and join me in the quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, considered republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two seconds of minutes to approve. Can I get a motion? Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Lober. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. We have one resolution. Commissioner Zonka?
Samantha. Thank you, you can come up. And I'll let you tell us a little bit about your organization, and I'd love to hear about your boy, because I'm so proud of him and all his accomplishments, so.
Thank you, Commissioner, we appreciate that. My name is Samantha Nazario. I am a Melbourne resident and constituent of this amazing commission here in front of me. I'd like to thank Kurt Smith, who started this initiative three years ago with me, and Commissioner Zonka, who has continued it for the last two years. I'm an ambassador for the Bleeding Disorder Coalition of Florida, and a 16-year volunteer for the Hemophilia Foundation of Greater Florida. As that role, I advocate in Tallahassee and Washington to change policy for research and development in bleeding disorders. We are among the unseen killer, as we say. You usually don't go diagnosed until it's a life-threatening moment. My son was diagnosed at six years old, and by the time he was eight, he was $100,000 away from his lifetime million-dollar cap. So the Affordable Care Act has saved my son. And this county has been our home now for 17 years. It's welcoming, it's helped us raise money. My son creates this T-shirt every year, a different edition. This year, he did it with COVID in mind, so they have masks on. And we've had to learn to operate through this now, like he calls it, the new world order. But we are here to help bring awareness to Brevard County for bleeding disorders. We currently have 289 children, and I'm sure we have many more that have not been diagnosed. Our illness is extremely expensive, there is no generic medication, so we hope that by bringing this awareness to the community, we invite you to look at our website, hemophiliaofgreaterflorida.org, Florida Hemophilia Association, and the Bleeding Disorder Coalition of Florida. And I'd like to thank our commissioners in continuing this partnership to bring awareness to the community. Thank you.
Resolution, whereas hemophilia is a rare disorder in which your blood doesn't clot normally because it lacks sufficient blood clotting proteins or clotting factors, and whereas if you have hemophilia, you may bleed for a longer time after an injury than you would if your blood clotted normally, causing weakness of the voluntary muscles, and whereas symptoms of hemophilia may include unexplained and excessive bleeding, large or deep bruises, pain in joints, and nosebleeds without a known cause. And whereas the Bleeding Disorders Coalition of Florida is an advocacy organization founded by the Hemophilia Foundation of Greater Florida and the Florida Hemophilia Association to be the voice of the Florida Bleeding Disorders community. And whereas the Bleeding Disorders Coalition of Florida has been serving the Bleeding Disorders community to improve their quality of life by offering programs and services such as medically-supervised camp, scholarships, advocacy efforts, emergency financial assistance, and educational programs to support healthier and more independent lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of March 2021 as Hemophilia and Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month, to bring awareness, education, and support to those who are affected by hemophilia and bleeding disorders in Brevard County and throughout the world. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of February AD 2021. And with that, Chairwoman, I would like to make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Zonka, second by Commissioner Lober. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We're going to move into consent agenda, Commissioners. Do we have any that you would like to pull?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to pull F1, F12, and lastly, F24.
Any more cards? Polls? I'm sorry, I was about to say, I have one card on F16. So if you're okay with that, I'm going to let this gentleman read first, and Commissioner Lober, I'm going to let you.
Sure, absolutely. I plan to support 16, though.
Okay. Mr. Gene Schaaf, Dean Schaaf? For F16, sir? And this is the lease with Brevard Veterans Council.
Right. I didn't know I had to speak, but.
Oh, you don't have to if you don't want to. I just have a card.
Unless you have any questions on it, no.
Okay.
Motion approved, Madam Chair.
Okay. Then we will move to item F1. Commissioner Lober?
All right, perfect. Okay, I'll go ahead and withdraw the motion on F16, and we'll address all of that, I guess, afterward. But F1, if folks are interested in why I'm intending to vote against this, I'm happy to discuss it, but I do want to vote no on this item.
Okay, is that your only comment, sir?
Unless someone has a question, I'd be happy to answer if there are questions, but.
Okay. Item F12, sir?
With respect to F12, I know that there's some members that have already heard this, but I hate printer leases for organizations that can afford to buy them. When I look at something like this, I look to see what the purchase price is of the equipment if you were to buy the same, or something substantially similar, add in a service contract over the duration of what the lease otherwise would be, and then subtract whatever the residual value would be at the end of the lease. Typically, these folks that are doing the leasing aren't doing the leasing out of the goodness of their hearts, and I don't begrudge them for making money. But I think with a one-and-a-half-billion-dollar annual budget, that we don't need to have someone subsidize our use and maintenance of equipment of this sort. So I just, I don't support it based on, based on the math, just not making sense to me.
Thank you, sir. Please.
Do you have a reasonable alternative? Or are you just throwing that out because you think it's too much money?
Yeah, I haven't priced out the same, but I can tell you, when I looked at that, when I discussed it with staff, I didn't hear that there was even a quote obtained for the purchase price with a service contract that would provide the same level of maintenance, or even a guesstimate as to what the residual value is. I'm certainly happy to do that. I can tell you that, you know, for my law firm, I've bought Konica Minolta myself, and they've been very reasonable with what the pricing is. I can go to the same folks that I've used for my own law firm and get a quote from them, unless there's some issue with the county policy. Or I can provide that info to staff, and they're welcome to reach out. If there's someone else they want to get a quote from, I have, you know, no objection one way or the other. I just, you know, I know that they generally do not go for MSRP, and that there are absolutely service contracts available. And oftentimes, at least when I last purchased, even if the residual value was zero, the cost to buy it upfront with the service contract, when I last priced it out for my own purposes, and granted, in all disclosure, it was not a large-format plotter, it was less expensive to own it than it was to rent it.
Interesting.
Mr. Fontaine.
So again, we're, the due diligence we did, I did go online to see what a purchase price is for this plotter, and I know it's referred to as a multipurpose printer, but it's really a plotter scanner, just to kind of visualize. This quote, and again, this quote isn't affiliated with any contract we have through a piggyback or whatnot. Regular price was $32,000 for purchase, advertised sale price was $20,117. And that's comparable with the lease agreement of the $21,200 over five years. And then with the maintenance, which historically, the reason why my department was looking at a lease was, until we know we have comfort level with this, we've never used a, this model of a plotter. So without us knowing the comfort level, after its useful life, if we determined that this was a steady plotter, in the next cycle of, you know, getting a new plotter, we would look at just doing a purchase price. But by us doing the maintenance plan, it protects us because we've put in good money into bad plotters before, and it's our way of trying to correct that.
You know, I don't have any issue with that, but I just think if you can get the same equipment for a comparable price and own it at the end of the day with a service contract, that's, given the size of our work and what we're able to do, that's the way that I would be more comfortable. Again, folks are welcome to vote however they'd like, but I'm just not going to support it at this point.
Mr. Eddy, so we're kind of spending $10,000 over 60 months for a maintenance, or making like a warranty on it?
That's correct. Right. The purchase price and lease price is comparable, it's the question of the maintenance cost.
Do they typically break down often, or?
It depends on the plotter, and this is a new one. I can tell you from experience, I mean, a plotter's like a car. When you venture into buying a new make and model, you hope for the best, but, you know, sometimes you have bad experiences and you don't go back to them. We were looking through a piggyback format, we found this one, and again, we found that the price to be comparable. To say we're going to get the value for the maintenance plan, I'd like to come back in five years and tell you no, but I can tell you, historically, in the last one we had, we, the running joke was, I was on first-name basis with the repairman.
Did we have a maintenance plan with the last machine? How much was the cost on that for maintenance?
He was coming in, I mean, we don't have a total cost, but he was coming in two, three times a week, a month, and it was ranging anywhere from $150 to $250 a visit.
But I think that was a totally different brand as well, wasn't it?
It was. It was.
And if you all want, I mean, if you're more comfortable, Eddie, I don't know if you need this instantaneously, but I'm happy, like I said, to spend an hour or two and get a quote to see from someone that's authorized to sell that within Brevard County as well, to get a purchase price with a service contract. If you let me know if the service contract appears to be better or worse or comparable, I can have them adjusted accordingly. And then if there's an idea as to what the residual value is, I'll see if I can get an idea to that. But if it's close, you know, even if the residual value is zero at the end of it, I just, I've never had a good feeling of big organizations spending this kind of money on equipment that we could, we could own outright at the end for either a wash or just a little bit more.
Is there a title transfer at the end of it, or a reduced option to purchase it at the end of this? Is that type of lease, is it capital, or?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Just quick math, Commissioner Lober, but you guys got to decide. I just took the amount you said, $150, times 12, and then I multiplied that by five years, and it's about a $9,000 of what they've been paying in maintenance. I think it's a $1,000 delta. So what would you guys like to do?
Well, for me, unless you're under the gun to get this done within the next week or so, I'd like to take up Commissioner Lober's offer to research his people.
I'm happy to do it.
And let us know.
Is that good? We'll discuss it next meeting. I know it's a unique machine.
Right.
It's not like regular copiers.
No, no, no. I mean, like I said, we've, we've been with one this long, we can, can be with, you know, we can do our due diligence even further.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll move to continue F12, then, to the next meeting.
Okay. I vote, move to table, to the next meeting, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Sir, item F20, correct?
24, ma'am.
24.
So I just wanted to take a very brief moment to thank Wendy for having taken some time to speak with me. I did have some concerns on the front end. I will tell you that those concerns vanished after spending some time with her. You know, I would just encourage you all to support her. I certainly have nothing but good to say, and I just want to welcome her aboard.
Okay, so.
I'd like to second that. I just met her this morning, but I'm a, I'm a big library guy, and I have a lot of confidence in our folks picking somebody really good, and so, welcome aboard.
And I believe everybody said she was really nice, which is a good thing.
Or she's got us fooled.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve all the agenda items? And I think Mr. Lober is voting a no on item F1, correct, sir?
F1, that's correct, ma'am.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Zonka. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. I just want to make a comment. Commissioner Tobias, you put on a resolution for Mr. Berman?
Yes, ma'am.
And I strongly support that. He's such a wonderful person. He's been with me my whole time I've been doing this stuff, and he moved over to business and health, and he's been with us all the time. But, you know, I didn't always like everything he printed, but at least he was pretty even across the board when he did his stories, and I've always appreciated him. But since he's moved to business, I got to tell you, one of his first stories that came out was new study finds Brevard has second-strongest economic growth in the whole country. And so he's really on doing his job, and I appreciate getting to have that, our community understand that. I mean, second in the whole nation, our economy's growing. And so, very proud of the job that everybody's been doing here, our economic development team, and, and actually, the commission before us did a lot to plant those seeds, and I always told Commissioner Fisher, it was my job not to mess up what he started. So I just, I want to just throw out a big thank you to all those people that set all this up and did all the things to get us where we are now. Very proud of us as a community, and I really appreciate this county commission. I think you guys are really smart. So just want to throw that out. We're going to move into.
So is Commissioner Tobias going to do a resolution?
I think he did.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Berman's probably one of the individuals that appreciates flying underneath the radar. That's why I put it on consent. He's probably just cringing a little bit that his name was, you know, even, even announced. He certainly deserves recognition, but in deference to, you know, the demeanor that he always has, that's, that's why I put it on consent.
And that's why I'm mentioning it, because I know it's on consent, but I just wanted him to get some public notice since we, one of his cohorts was, was largely open to, I don't know how to put this delicately, but the last meeting, we had some comments made out in the open about one of his contemporaries. So I just wanted to make sure that the world knows that we're supporting, we're not, we're not anti-press, we were just anti that one particular person. And I, and I want to add that we probably went a little overboard on, on that particular issue. But I want to say that Mr. Berman has been very, very honest. And to me, that's the key for someone that's in that business, a reporter as such. Honesty is really what we look to our reporters and our news people, because without honesty, we don't know what to believe or who to believe. So then it becomes more of a dictatorship on their part, because they tell you what you should believe, which is, which is total anathema to freedom of the press, from my perspective. And he was always honest. Every time I had an issue that I wanted off the record, he never violated that, he would always keep it under his, so we could have a conversation. And I would say, this is off the record, and it stayed off the record. So again, that he was honest with what he did, I think that was, that was very important, and it was very refreshing in this day and age. So kudos to Mr. Berman.
Thank you, sir.
I'm chair, and I mentioned the resolution, but, and you were there during the hurricanes that had blown through, through the EOC. But Mr. Berman was there 100% of the time. You know, he has a family, and, and he prioritized his job, and I greatly appreciate the, he was, sometimes we get a little long-winded, and he never left early. He was always here before. You know, there's not a harder worker out there, and I wish him all the best as he transitions into whatever position he has now. Hopefully, he won't have to put up with the long hours that we put him through.
Yeah, that was Hurricane Irma, and I was chair then, and I, and the staff, everybody that's part of our staff was just, they're just, you know you can always depend on them. But yes, Mr. Berman was always there, and he, he did his job diligently. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to move into public comment.
Madam Chair, just real briefly.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, that's all right. No, and I don't want to take too long to get into this. I'd like to keep a positive topic positive, but, you know, just since it did come up in context, I do want to make one brief comment on the difference between this resolution and the other. With respect to the resolution that we had previously, I can tell you why I was much more willing to roast that reporter as opposed to Mr. Berman, in addition to what we've already heard. The fact is, as you've mentioned, Dave was by and large very fair with respect to who he criticized and how he criticized them. There's never been an issue, at least from my perspective, criticizing government on the part of the media. I think it's appropriate, it's healthy, it's a good thing. But when you cease to have someone that is holding themselves out as a member of the media, retaining a certain level of impartiality, that's where the issues come across. And I will tell you that the, the most profound issue in my personal firsthand experience with respect to that was when the other individual who we referenced in the prior resolution was just lambasting us, and me in particular, at the same time that that was going on with article after article where they changed a few words and essentially said the same thing, just to repackage yet another hit piece, one-sided. I don't think she ever even asked for my commentary, unlike Dave. If Dave was going to criticize me, at least Dave would ask me for my perspective and consider including it, and oftentimes include some of it. The difference with the other was, when she was doing that, there was no effort whatsoever made to get the other side of the story. And what's more, her employer at the same time told me in writing that if I paid for advertising, that I could perhaps change the narrative and get my side of the story across. That, to me, is disgusting. That's not media, that doesn't make her brave, that doesn't make her a hero. I never had that from Dave Berman. Dave was always fair regardless with respect to his coverage. When I did things that were dumb, he called me out for it. When I did things that were smart, he gave me praise for it. And that's, that's how it ought to be. But with the other, and I don't want to denigrate Dave by using the term journalist in reference to the other individual, it just wasn't there. So again, congratulations to Dave. I'll tell you, you know, better than nine out of 10 times, I think he did an excellent job, and quite frankly, if I disagree with him, one out of 10, that probably means he's doing the right thing.
Right. I'm going to open up public comment. I'm starting with Mr. J.B. Dennis, and then I have Mr. Jerry Sampson, and then Ms. Sandra Sullivan.
Good morning, Reverend J.B. Dennis, 317, Kalina Drive. Before I talk about systemic racism and dereliction of duty, I'd like to get a county manager a photo. I'm not going to talk about, after 10 years, we have no arrests at Kalina and Barnett Road about the drug dealing. I'm not going to talk about Scottsmoor has no bus service, still have dirt roads, no fire hydrants. I'm not going to talk about the trash that are being thrown on Pluckinbaum, Parrish Road, Barnett Road, and nobody's cleaning it up. I'm going to talk about how my community is being robbed for our tax dollars, and we get nothing in return. I'm not going to talk about the years and years we've been complaining about the gun range, about you closing it in or moving it on the property up there on Kelp Road. I'm going to talk about this one issue. We got a ditch. I called in four months ago, which was November, about cleaning it out. I've also called the county manager's office about five or six times, heard excuse after excuse after excuse. I also talked to the streets and highway supervisor. He told me in so many words, "F you and the county manager. We on a contract, we going to spray it in five weeks." That was in December, we haven't seen anybody yet. We are fed up with this Republican county government that's taking our tax dollars and giving us nothing. I've taken you the federal coat once before. You wiggle out of that. Okay, the next step we're going to take, the next, the next election, we intend to register 20,000 Democrats to throw every one of you clock riders out of office. And I want to just ask one question before I sit down. Why the ditch y'all made clean out in four months?
Thank you, sir. Are you finished?
No. I just asked a question to the county manager. Why this ditch y'all made clean out in four months?
You have to direct it to the front, sir. And this is just, you have to direct it to the front, and this is just public comment. Thank you, sir. Okay, I have Mr. Jerry Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you don't mind, I'll take this off so I can breathe and speak a little easier. Good morning. As all of y'all know, I'm Jerry Sampson. I'm the chairman of the Tidus Hill Council. of the Tizolco Airport Authority. And since you all have expressed an interest in what we're doing, and we appreciate that, and the chairman took the time to come to our last meeting, and we appreciate that, I just wanted to get with you, give you an update on where we are. I think all of you all have received the, let me back up a minute. A couple, almost, excuse me, almost a month ago, we received a letter that indicated some issues that they were concerned about, even though this was somewhat of a rehash of an issue that we addressed two years ago. I immediately forwarded that to our attorney, asking them to conduct a full investigation into that, independent, and get it back to us as soon as possible. They did, he did that the other day. I think all of you all were provided a copy of that, and he didn't find any new issues, although he did defer a few issues to the board, which the board is gonna take up at the next meeting. And so, I think those things are moving forward, as you saw in Friday's newspaper article, which I think was a fair and accurate article. Our CEO has decided to resign and move on. We've appointed a search committee, our vice chairman, Mr. John Craig, who I suspect will be chairman fairly soon, well, in the next little while. He's chairman of the search committee, and he'll conduct that, of course, with the rest of the board being as involved as needed to be. So, I think we're moving on. Madam Chair, you indicated that you would like some changes, and I think we're working on those. And I just wanted to give you all, I think we've done a lot of good things out there. There's a lot of good things coming. But I wanted to personally appear before you all, give you all a chance to ask me any questions that you might have, and let you know that we are in good faith moving forward, Madam Chair, with your suggestions. And if there's anything I can do to help, just let me know. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zanka?
I have a question, because there's a long history, obviously, and there's questions of nepotism. There's an issue with theft with previous employees of equipment, and the recent loss of the $170,000. And I'm just wondering, there's been many years that this has been going on, and I understand that some of the people on the board have changed, but this seems to be a problem that's, why did it take this to finally get this guy out of here, is what I'm wondering? Because we were so fired up about it, not, and it's sad that it took the deputy fire marshal to send us correspondence regarding a clearly case of racism that occurred at the airport that was sort of swept under the rug. The employee was told, "You can't talk like that anymore." That, to me, is appalling. Not, not, "Oh, well, this may have happened. This may, you can't talk like that anymore." That behavior should never have been accepted, never should have been swept under the rug, and never should have been just poo-pooed like he was rude in a conversation with a constituent. I mean, that's, it's pretty awful what occurred.
Yes, ma'am. It would be if that was in fact what happened.
So, you were there, and you're certain that that didn't occur?
I'm saying that it didn't, that the representation that I believe has been made to you was not complete. And that was not poo-pooed, was not swept under the rug within our, within the Airport Authority's policy manual. And you know how, when you're dealing with employees, you have to be very careful in what you do.
Well, by the sounds of it, the policy manual isn't followed very closely if this
Yes, ma'am, it was.
chaos has been going on for as long as it has.
No, ma'am. I think, like I said, I think you've gotten a filtered version of what's been going on. That issue was thoroughly looked into and was addressed within the policy manual. I can tell you now that both of those individuals are gone. The finance director was asked to resign as a result of the mistake that she made in not doing the final submission of those three FAA grants. I can't...
I understood that she asked them to go ahead and revisit the grant after the grant was closed, because she realized that she didn't request reimbursement. Is that what happened?
That sounds like what, that sounds like what I understand.
So, she was asking them to commit fraud?
No, 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 no. She was asking if, she asked, well, Michael asked, our CEO, went back and said, "Is this in fact closed, or is there any other opportunity we can do to recover this?" Simple request that I think any of you all would make when you discovered that the person in charge of doing that had not done their job, and your responsibility is to see that it gets done.
But I guess what I don't understand is if everything's so awesome at the airport, and they're doing such great things, why is everybody going, and why is everybody gone?
Everybody's a big term, Commissioner.
I mean, how many employees out of how many employees? What's that denominator? Finance director, the airport manager, I mean, those are pretty big positions, I would think.
Yes, ma'am. And the, those are two, I mean, the, and I'm hesitant, because I want to give you the right answer. I don't want you to think I'm not telling you the truth. The finance director was asked to, to take, well, to resign and take their time that they're allowed under the policy manual to help transition in somebody else. Michael, as a result of questions, and basically said, you know, like in the Navy, you run the ship aground, no matter who is at the helm, the captain takes the responsibility. And that's what Michael did. He was...
Well, I understand the DOG hasn't seen your airport manager in, I think, five years.
I don't think that's correct.
Okay.
He works very closely. And like I said, I don't know who you get these details from. I would hope that any of you all, if you have questions about things that are going on out there, and you hear things, that you send either Michael a letter or give me a call, and we'll look into them. Now, there's been some disagreement with a former board member that seemed to want to do everything different. They brought up things, and the board's worked on it. And I'm not gonna say that everything's been fine all along, but we've done a lot of great things at that airport. We've got, had over $50 million worth of improvements at that airport over recent years. And as you probably remember, when the Space Force was down-selecting for its United States headquarters, our facility was the one selected in the state of Florida to be our offer in the state of Florida for that Space Force headquarters. And they looked at everything. And so, I'm kind of proud of the fact that we were the site, the proposed site in the state of Florida, the state of Florida's offer for the Space Force headquarters.
I'm not gonna throw state employees under the bus, but I'd be happy to have them call the commissioners if that's the case, and they can tell them about his lack of presence. And I'm not saying, he's gone, so I guess that that's probably a good thing moving forward.
I think so.
If all of this occurred under his watch. But that's not a misrepresentation of what's happened. And you only need to talk to other airport managers, and I'm not talking about ours. I'm just talking about other airport managers and other state and local leaders that were excited to see that airport manager go, because he's not been cooperative, and he's not been able to reach.
Well, I think you'll find a lot of people in this community would disagree with that, Commissioner. And obviously, you know, you're entitled to your opinion, and you're entitled to talk to the people that you want to talk to. But there was, a lot of people have written in support to the airport over the years of Michael. And so, when he requested to resign, sent us, asked the board to accept his letter of resignation, we did unanimously. And so, I mean, that's, we're moving forward. Mr. Craig, I think, is gonna do an excellent job with the search committee. And however long it takes, we'll get, we'll get a good director. You know, I'm, I've, I'll tell you, I've had enough fun on the Airport Authority. I think we've done a lot. But I'm ready to move on, and I've asked Mr. Smith to, told him, "I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna request reappointment." And I suspect his other appointees in the same position. So, you know, our term's in, the end of July, and we're more than happy to work with you guys and get things, you know, moving forward to improve, get past this. And I don't know what else to tell you, other than, other than what Commissioner Pritchett indicated, that y'all were upset, and you wanted some changes. And we're working on doing those changes. And I don't know what else you want to ask of us.
I would just encourage you that if a commissioner requests to come to a meeting, that the meeting not get canceled because of the claim that there wasn't enough space?
No, 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 no. I'm gonna interrupt that. The meeting was not canceled because a commissioner asked to attend. The meeting was canceled because at the time it was canceled, there was only one small item on the agenda, to my knowledge, and it didn't seem worth having, getting everybody up to the meeting. There was, Commissioner Pritchett was not told that there wasn't room in there.
Yes, there was.
Okay. Well, I was not aware of that. I can tell you that. And I was not aware of your request to be there when I asked Michael to cancel the meeting, because it didn't seem worth us coming and having that meeting just to approve one invoice.
I don't know if we should, Commissioner Zanka, maybe we should or shouldn't, but there's such a big story on that. Mr. Sampson, I don't know if you truly don't know the information, but it was definitely a canceled meeting, because the commissioner was showing up, because she's been trying to, no, I'm just telling you, a few times. And then I had board members call me after that furious that that meeting got called, and they didn't know about it, because they had a heavy agenda. And they were, made the statement very clearly, they were gonna discuss specific things at that meeting. So, if the chair called it without knowing if the rest, the...
And that's me.
I know. If you called it without asking the rest of the board meeting, there's another place I think there's a problem. I think the chair of the board is making too many decisions without the board's consensus. I wouldn't stand up here and make decisions for this board without knowing what the board wants to do. So, I, in my opinion, I think the chair has really overstepped his bounds as well in this situation. I'm gonna talk. In my opinion, I think that's a problem. I don't want to hurt the man who just resigned as a person. I think there has been a lot of problems here. I don't think anyone's taken responsibility. A good manager would have said, "Yes, there's a problem. I need to work on this," instead of saying it's one other person's fault that used to be on the board before. That doesn't cut it for me. If you're a manager, you need to manage, and you need to put on your big-boy pants and do it. I think that when you, you have a situation, I sat in that meeting, I was shocked that the other board members don't really get to talk without being reprimanded. It really bothered me a lot. So, I think there does need to be a lot of changes. That board is smart. They need to be allowed to make these choices and decisions and move in direction. I think they need to have input on when they want special meetings. I think they need to have input when they want things put on that agenda. And I don't think they should be shut out. And those are gonna be the changes I'm gonna be watching for, to make sure that sunshine law is happening, and that everybody has the opportunity to speak and make some changes. I think Mr. Craig is gonna do a great job. I think he will make a great chair of that board later. I think that there has to be all those changes. And I don't believe the other fellow was really doing, I don't think he was competent to do it. Nice guy, but I don't think he had the ability. And as far as the support letters, when I first got elected in the city, I was called and asked, "Please write this letter," and I didn't even know who it was, and I did it. So, I don't know about all that, but I can tell you that if you lose $170,000 from just not putting a piece of paper in, I don't know why the person who was doing finances was doing it, but that's the CEO's problem. And nobody was paying attention. So, that's, that's a big deal. Soon as that happened, that's a big deal. Mr. Rowawski at the Valkyria, he's got $30 million in grants over the last 10 years. Tyco isn't even getting that, and they've got three airports. There has to be so many changes done. And the communication has to be done, and people need to take responsibility when they've messed up. They just need to say, "I've messed this up, and I need to fix it." And if you can't say that, you don't deserve your position.
I agree with that. And, I mean, if you remember, I told the rest of the board that I apologize for canceling that meeting. I was only aware of the one issue of the invoice when I asked Michael to cancel the meeting. It's simple as that, Madam Chair. I was not aware, because, you know, the board members don't talk to each other between meetings. So, I was not aware that there was any concern about anything else on that agenda. I mean, it just, there wasn't.
I don't know if regular meetings should get canceled.
Well, and I thought, typically...
It's an important board, and they haven't gotten canceled in the past.
Yes, ma'am, they have.
Not for a long period of time.
It hasn't been that long.
Yeah. No, I looked at all these things, and I've been interviewing so many people. And I'm just telling you, we, this is in a battle you want to get in up here, sir.
I'm not, no, I'm not interested in battling y'all, because y'all are the owners of the airport, and we're trying to manage that for you in a good way. And all I can tell you is that I told the board, I said, "Don't worry about," I said, you know, there was two days before the meeting when it appeared to me we were gonna have a meeting and just take up everybody's time for next to nothing. And I suggested, and I asked Michael to
Did he tell you the commissioner was coming?
No, ma'am.
And then I was told the room wasn't big enough for going to the library, and so, we're, I'm helping them get to the library, then I get a call, "Well, we decided the room's now big enough." It's not cool.
I was not aware of a request for you to be there, for me to be changed. I asked Michael if we had a written request, or any, an email request, or a formal request, and I said, "No." I was not aware that you wanted to attend that meeting. Otherwise, I would certainly not have, not have canceled it. Usually, when we're looking at something like that, we will poll the members. But this was two days before the meeting.
Should have polled the members.
Typically, the response we get when we poll the members is very low. And so, it seemed like if we, if we took the time to poll the members...
Should have taken the time to poll the members.
I appreciate that.
Very suspicious, you know.
As I, I understand. And all accusations came after that. It was some kind of conspiracy to not hear things, and that was the reason that it was canceled. And it was just canceled for, very simple, it didn't look like it was worth holding the meeting and taking everybody's time. And I was not aware there was a request for, from you or any other commissioner to attend that meeting. And that's just, it's very, very, very simple. There was no conspiracy. There was no underhanded move.
Well, then another member, after that happened, tried to call a special meeting, because they wanted to cover those things. And they were told that the board was polled, and it came back, they didn't want to have a special meeting.
No, ma'am.
Did you hear about a special meeting?
I heard that Michael asked me, he said, some of the, some of the, a member is asking, "Should we have a special meeting?" And the attorney said, "We didn't need a special meeting to handle that issue." I mean, you know, as chair, you make decisions, and not everybody likes all of them.
I would never make a decision for this board without their consensus. I would never do it.
Well, let me, I'll tell you what I made.
Because I'm just the chair. I run the meeting, but I am not over any commissioner up here. We're all even.
I felt very comfortable that I could ask the attorney to begin an investigation on those allegations without polling the rest of the board. I figured that if the board objected to the attorney holding, conducting the investigation, that we'd deal with that later. But I felt that we needed to get started on that. So, without polling the board, I directed the attorney to begin looking into this, report back as soon as he could, go as deep as he needed to go, and involve Michael as much as he felt it was appropriate.
We're getting off, we're getting off my topic a little bit. Commissioner Lober?
Just real briefly, and I don't want to just pile on here. I think, you know, the most important thing from my perspective is to make sure that we don't have anything that would increase or facilitate the likelihood of something like what's happened before happening again. I can tell you that, you know, certainly, the change that's been made over there thus far is a step in the right direction with respect to that. My personal concern, and I don't want to rehash history too much here, is, and this isn't necessarily the board as much as it is management over at the Airport Authority. When the original issue was forwarded to counsel back in 2019, from what I saw from counsel's response to you all that was forwarded to me in the recent past here, there were different options that were presented to the Airport Authority in terms of how they were entitled to handle it, based upon the attorney's recommendations, the authority's attorney, that is. Now, one of them was pretty innocuous and amounted to a slap on the wrist. Basically, I think it was a three-day suspension, as I recall. And the other was termination. To me, again, if there was sufficient support for the contention that what was said to have occurred, occurred, that's terminable. I've got to tell you, you know, I wasn't involved in the research that took place with respect to whether that did or did not occur. What did trouble me, though, is that the, out of the two options that were laid out by the attorney, the most, the most light-handed option was the option chosen. To me, either, either what was said to have occurred, occurred, or it didn't occur. If it didn't occur, there shouldn't be any punishment. And if it did occur, that person no longer needs to be working there. So, the troubling thing to me was that there was, there was a punishment meted out, or there was discipline, I should say, meted out, but it was slight discipline. So, I kind of was confused in terms of figuring out, well, if they were gonna do it that way, if they're really trying to disincentivize that type of behavior, would they not want to make an example of this person, as I would in my own office? I have no intention of firing anyone in my office. I love them. I give them all blood, presuming they could use my blood type. But if they did something like that, any of them, I mean, that, to me, it's, it's an indicator. It's not a yellow flag. It is a tremendous red flag that would serve to suggest to me... suggest to me that they don't have the ability to make decisions properly, as, as one of the other commissioners pointed out a couple minutes ago, you know, to, to basically say, well, you can't say that again. That wasn't the end of the story. The, the response, as, as far as what was alleged there, was that, with laughter, there was some talk about bringing whips back and whipping the, the folks that were referenced with the Rachel Pejorative. To me, I just, I read it and I, I was shaking my head thinking, could someone be that dense and that dumb as to think that that's acceptable? The stuff that we get called racist up here for, I mean, you, you have to be at Twilight Zone levels of conspiracy to think that there's any, any racism at all. It's, you know, something so tenuous, it's ridiculous. But when you have someone using the N-word and then being told, hey, you can't do that, only to turn around and joke about whipping people, I mean, to me, my, my mind's going to blow up if I hear that again. So I'm, I'm not saying that it's, it's entirely by any means the fault of the board, but I, I think that the administration there, whether, and I, I'm not looking to pile on, on Mike Powell either. You know, I, I can just tell you that I, I think there, there remains work to be done in terms of addressing what policies existed. Because I'm, I'm going to take your word for it in terms of, of your saying that policies were followed. I, I don't know that they weren't. You're telling me that they were? I don't have reason to doubt that. But what I can tell you is, assuming for the sake of our conversation here, that that is in fact correct and that policies and procedures were followed, the policies and procedures were clearly inadequate, given the outcome and how this took place. Now, I'm, I'm not going to go as far as to say it was swept under the rug, but I, I can tell you that I understand why other folks have that impression. When you see someone that's suspended for, for three days as a result of, of allegedly having done what, what was alleged to have been done, that does reasonably, in my mind at least, lead certain folks to come to the, the conclusion, the understandable conclusion that things are then swept under the rug. So what, what I can tell you is, you know, aside from whatever personnel changes may or may not be taking place there beyond what's already been made public, I just think there, there needs to be a, a hard look at, at the actual policies and procedures that were entailed in the investigation and that came up with respect to that, to determine, are they sufficient? Are there, are there loopholes in here that we need to, to patch up so that someone doesn't get the idea that if this happens again, we're just going to suspend them for three days? So I'm, I apologize, you know, if, if I, it seems like I'm coming at you, that's not what I'm trying to do. I, I'm not mad at you as much as I am mad at the situation that, that apparently occurred. You know, the, the thing is, obviously, you weren't there, I wasn't there, none of us that are sitting up here were there. No one here, no one in this room, I imagine, was within earshot of this conversation that was complained of. Do I know that this individual used the N-word? No. Do I know that he followed it up by laughing and talking about whipping? Folks, no. But the allegation and the allegation being sent forward by someone that's got a position of substantial authority at the airport bothered the hell out of me. You know, I don't, I don't really see much in, in the realm of politics, or even in law for that matter, that gets my blood boiling. But when I saw something like that where it's not just there's an allegation of blatant racism, it's coming from someone where there is a tremendous position of authority, and by virtue of his holding that position of authority, it's only logical to figure he must have done something right in life and something right in his work environment to have achieved that level. It, it just, it adds a level of credibility, not to say that I wouldn't take it seriously if it came from someone else, but to say all the more so, it's all the more concerning, over and above how concerning it otherwise would be, given who it's coming from. So, you know, I, I would just encourage you, not you as, as, as chair, but you as a member of that particular board, you, you really may want to go into the, the actual policies with the rest of the board, with the attorney, when you have an opportunity to do that. Because I can tell you, if we had a policy like that here where it resulted in, in one of our county employees, and we've got a slew of them here, I mean, we have four digits worth of direct county employees, if one of them was alleged to have done what was alleged to have been done, and all that happened was a three-day suspension, I, I would be looking into that policy very quickly in terms of changing it. And I, I get from your perspective that this was addressed two years ago, and I, I respect that, that this was sent to the attorney then, and I don't think you did anything wrong by having done that. But I think the thing that leads people to believe, and I, I get it, and in fact, I kind of feel that way myself, well, I shouldn't say I kind of, I do feel that way myself, that it wasn't, it wasn't concluded at that point is because it just looks like it's insufficient when you have a three-day suspension as a result of what it was that was alleged. So I, you know, I'm not going to continue to pile up on you. You know, I, I'm sure that's probably not the most fun podium to be standing at, but I, I just, I, I think, you know, for, in defense of the other folks that are up here, you've got, understand how it looks to us, and it, it just, it was as far from pretty as, as, as things can get.
Commissioner Lober, I-
Commissioner Zonka, I'm sorry, sir.
Can I answer his question?
Well, I don't think he really asked a question. But let me let Ms. Zonka, Commissioner Zonka talk, and then, thank you.
How, I was just curious, how long you been a board member?
I've been a board member since, I think it was 2006, when Commissioner Carlson asked if I would mind my name being put in the pot, being appointed.
Okay, so I, I appreciate your service. And I guess my point would be, we don't have the power or authority to set up guidelines to, to remove you.
Right.
We don't. Because, but we have set term limits for our other boards, and that's what we've done. To me, my biggest issue is, is, you know, this is the one thing that we found, and this is more directed toward the board, that $170,000, probably more because people were coming forward with some of the problems. My issue is, I have board members that feel like they can't talk when they go to meetings. They feel like they're being run over by the chairman. I mean, you came to this meeting to address this head-on, so I hate to-
No, that's fine.
-I hate to give it to you back, but I'm saying, this is, these are the, these are your board members, not, not anybody that's been on the board in the past, board members that are there now. They feel like they can't talk, they feel like you run the airport, and they feel like, I'm just telling you-
No, I understand.
And I'm not going to say their names because it wouldn't be appropriate.
No, I wouldn't ask you to.
But what I'm saying is, is I would be very interested, and I would hope that you would do this, assuming that you say this, this has been such a great airport, and it's been managed so well up until, I guess, the light was shined on it. I would love to see the, the board, your board vote to do an audit. Because if you've, if you've missed $170,000, or your finance person missed that, there's probably monies and other issues in the past.
We're in the middle of an audit right now. We're in the middle of an audit.
Okay. Like, probably an external audit is what I would recommend. But anyway, again, this board doesn't have the power nor authority to, to remove you from, from the board, but to me, I would take half of your board and wipe it out, especially because these problems have been going on for this long. Because, you know, it was, it may have been an auditor that found this. I mean, what happened over the last several years before it, I don't know. I just, it's always been sort of laughed about, about the management over there and, and how the things are operating. Again, we don't have the power or authority to do anything with you guys, but you came here, and I just have to question the leadership of the board. If you've been, if you've been a chairman this long, and you don't know to poll your members to find out whether or not they want to, you should cancel a meeting, and all of this is going down and a meeting conveniently gets canceled. This commissioner was told that she couldn't come in the room because there wasn't enough room. She would have to wait outside.
We, we didn't have that problem the other day, did we, Madam Chair?
But I'm telling you, this is, and right before the meeting was canceled. So you almost had this, probably the majority of this board come to your meeting, and you may laugh at us because we don't have authority-
No, no.
-but we certainly can, can pass a resolution and ask the governor to remove board members.
If I, if I had known that there was interest in this board and being at that meeting, I wouldn't have considered canceling it. As far as I knew, we had one invoice to approve, and those are, those are pretty much pro forma. And everybody's got the chance to ask questions about them, and usually nobody asks any questions about them. If I had been aware that there was any of that interest, the meeting wouldn't have been canceled, I can tell you that.
But over the years, there's, there's been board members that have expressed concern about the management, and they were shut down. That's what they say. I mean, and current board members that express concerns, they're shut down. So I don't want to see that.
No, no, ma'am, I agree with you.
And I, again, I guess it's up to you. If you think that you, you're the great leader of this board, then so be it, but I don't see it, if this was all allowed to occur under your watch.
Well, like I said, I, I, one, I, I'm not aware that you've got these, that you've had these concerns, and I'm more than, as I think most people would tell you, I go over board to try to make sure that everybody on that board has the opportunity to speak. I do, and I make a point of that. But to Commissioner Lober's comments, you need to, I hope you understand that these were allegations that were made. And as you were talking about the differences between how one reporter and another reporter handles issues and handles facts, as soon as I heard that, of that allegation, two years ago, I directed Michael to get the attorney involved and do whatever was possible to handle that issue to the maximum extent possible, including firing. That was my directive to the exact director, to, to the attorney, was to do that. What the attorney came back with, it ended up being simply a, he said, he said, deal, and it, it never got beyond allegations because the person that was alleged to have said that said he didn't say it. And other people were saying, oh, I didn't hear it. And so the, what we did in that case with that employee was the maximum allowed under the policy guidelines, which are not much different than y'all's, based on the facts that the attorney could ascertain in that issue. And that's, that's just, that's where we were. That's what we did as a board. We did the maximum amount that the attorney recommended under the circumstance. And, I mean, you know, we weren't interested in trying anybody in the press, we weren't any interested in trying anybody based on what somebody thought they heard. You know, I, I directed the attorney to look into it and tell us what we can do, and that's what we did. That's, that's all I can tell you. I mean, we did the max, but it's important to remember, we were talking about allegations, and we weren't going to jump and fire somebody based on somebody's allegations.
I think Commissioner Lober's point was, why was there punishment administered if the allegations were not true? Why would someone accept the punishment, and why would there have been any punishment at all if what occurred didn't occur? Because I know if I didn't say something or do something, I sure as hell am not going to take that punishment. I would resign first.
I think there might have been some other comments and other things other than that that it was based on. We're talking about two years ago, and I don't remember all the details. But I do know that we didn't sweep anything out of the rug. We did the maximum that we felt that we were allowed to do.
But don't you see, we're, we're up here talking about this-
Oh, I understand, I understand.
-this commission obviously sees it as a big deal, and we're spending all this time on it. So this, to me, is a failure of, of management at all levels, in my opinion.
Okay. And I, and I, I can appreciate that, and I wish if you had had those concerns for a while, you would have contacted me, and we could have talked about these things, because you-
We don't have authority over your board.
I didn't think about authority. You, you don't have to have authority to call me and talk to me about your concerns. I'm a very open person.
Madam Chair?
No, not yet, sir. Hold on just a second. You've done this, Commissioner Zonka?
Yeah.
A, a couple comments.
Yes, ma'am.
These things might not have been illegal, but they definitely should have stimulated a change of policy then, and they didn't. And again, I, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse at this point, but there has been, there's been no management. There's been an extreme lack of management. And then what used to be, I think you had a lady retire a while ago that knew what she's doing. She left, and I don't think anybody had been paying it, I'm, I'm more, I'm as bothered with the financial stuff as, as-
You do?
But, you know, the, those other personality things, those are terrible things to happen, and good managers should have just swooped right in and made it a safe place for everybody. I don't think people feel all that safe there. So that, that bothers me. So I, I, Mr. Sampson, I'm just telling you, I think there just, we're kind of a day late and a dollar short on fixing some of these things. And, and about us, and about us not being able to do it, I, last year, I started saying, I want the minutes sent to me, and I want the agenda sent to me. I never got them. COVID hit, and so, you know, my, my fault there, because I was going to start coming to all the meetings, because I have your board members and, and the people that have hangers there call me, they're so frustrated. So, and I don't know how you didn't know this. If you didn't know this and I knew this, there's, there's something really wrong with communication or people feeling like they can speak freely. And I've got to tell you, sir, I think you're one of the nicest people in the world. I, I really like you and enjoy you, but I didn't enjoy you as a chair. And I went in there, you know, bothered with some of these things, but by the time I got there and started experiencing this meeting, I got flat out irritated. I, I couldn't, I was, I was shocked that every time someone tried to talk, they were told no, and almost, I, I, it just, it bothered me. They didn't feel like they had freedom to, to talk. It bothered me very greatly, and I, I'm not making that up. I didn't come in with that agenda, but I certainly left with that opinion. So I, I'm just letting you know.
I appreciate that.
And, and if, if we don't see that there is a problem, I'm concerned that there will be a change. Just telling you. Commissioner Lober?
Just real briefly, and I, I'm not saying, Mr. Sampson, that you'd seen this necessarily, but I'm, I'm just looking at a, a letter that was written in furtherance to what you'd mentioned, sending out to the attorney for an opinion on what took place back in 19. It's a May 29 letter from 19, from, actually, the prior firm, from Gray Robinson, that was sent to air-
That was the same attorney?
Yeah, same, same attorney, but sent to airport management. And I, I don't, in all disclosure, I don't see that this was sent to you necessarily, but in terms of what was relayed to you, it may not have been complete in terms of what airport management had relayed to you. Because I'm, I'm just reading verbatim out of the attorney's letter to airport management. It says, "To the extent you find after the pre-disciplinary hearing that Mr. Brooks did make the, the statement or statements he's alleged to have made, you may choose to treat such conduct as a quote, major offense, close quote, or in your discretion, a quote, dismissal offense, close quote. You should take into account Mr. so-and-so's work history, the nature of the offense, and any extenuating circumstances. If you elect to treat the incident as a quote, major offense, close quote, the policy manual calls for a written reprimand and up to three-day suspension for a first incident. If you elect to treat it as a quote, dismissal offense, close quote, then Mr. so-and-so should be terminated. In either event, you should notify Mr. so-and-so as soon as possible in perens, preferably at the end of the pre-disciplinary hearing of the decision, and he should, as soon thereafter as practicable, be provided a written statement of the discipline imposed and his right to institute the quote, grievance process, close quote." So my, my concern is, you know, respectfully, at least based upon what the attorney had sent to airport management, it, it doesn't appear that the most severe discipline that could be meted out was meted out. Both treating it either as a, as a major offense or as a dismissal offense based on this would require there being a finding by the airport that the statement alleged to have been made was made. So even the, the three-day suspension would contemplate, based upon what I'm reading in this letter, that there was a finding that that statement was made, which is really where I, I start to have issues. I don't have issues with your having sent it to the attorney. I think that was great. I think that was, you know, certainly of the, the options available, one of, if not the best option. I think it was great that you allowed him to investigate that independently. I, I see nothing to suggest that he didn't do that. But the problem is, the follow-through from the attorney to the airport authority to But the problem is, the follow-through from the attorney to the airport authority, to the board, uh, did not result in, in the maximum discipline being meted out for that. In fact, you know, it's, it's a shame that there, you know, that there was even a suggestion that, um, it could be considered a, uh, what do they call it, a major offense as opposed to a dismissal offense. It is what it is. I don't fault the attorney for, for that. If that's his opinion in terms of what the, the policy requires, then that's, that's his opinion. But given that there was, there was a degree of subjectivity in terms of which way to treat it, I, I'm just a little bit dismayed that, that the choice was made at any level to treat it as the lesser of the two.
Well, Commissioner Loeb, I think the key word's there, if there is a finding. And unfortunately, there wasn't a finding that, that that was in fact made. We wish there had been. It would have made it much more, much easier to have made whatever the correct decision would have been. If there had been a finding, it never got beyond the he said, he said portion. And, and I would hope that, never been a history of that before, of that person making those comments. There wasn't a firm defining that he in fact did make those comments, that just simply because of the nature of the issue, we would go to termination, simply because if he did in fact say that, we don't, we, we don't tolerate that, period. But there was no determination. We couldn't get more than one person to say that he said that.
That's what I'm having a hard time reconciling, Mr. Sampson. And I, I respect, I respect what you're saying, and I, I certainly understand that. It's logical. But the concern is both what was done, the three-day suspension, which is in accordance with what the attorney wrote, what should be done after there is a finding. Let me, I'll just read it again. "To the extent you find after the pre-discover, uh, pre-disciplinary hearing that so-and-so did make the statements, you may choose to treat it either as major, a major offense, which would result the three-day hearing, or as dismissal offense." So that contemplates if there was any discipline meted out, or, or any sort of an adverse employment decision, that there was some sort of a finding that it took place. If that didn't take place, I, I'm just having a hard time understanding why anything was done to him then.
Well, I guess all I can say, Commissioners, have you ever been involved in a court case where there was a settlement, where the, the, the person accused maintains they didn't do what they were asked, what they were accused of doing, but to get on with it? And I think I, if my understanding is that's, that's where it was with that employee. He wanted to get on with it, get on with his life, get on beyond that. He didn't, he says he didn't say it, and, but he was willing to take a three-day suspension just to move on. And I think that's where it was.
And maybe it's a difference in personality. I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Zonka on this, in the sense that if I didn't say that, I'd either quit or make you fire me.
I understand.
But, you know, again, may, maybe folks are wired differently, and I, I can't, you know, I can't disprove that. So, you know, certainly, that's something that's possible. I, I at least appreciate that, because it makes some degree of sense as a, as a plausible explanation.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I don't disagree. I'm that way, too. I mean, if, I, I know what I've, what I do and what I don't do, and what I say and what I don't say.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'm not, personally, I don't settle just because it's easier to move on with that. But I do recognize that, you know, everybody's different. And I can tell you, like I said, my first reaction, when I, when I heard those allegations from Mr. Powell, was that this guy's got to go. We, we, that's, that's not tolerated. Uh, we don't tolerate it, we don't have anything to do with that, and get with Mr. Byrd and find out what we can do legally, under our policy manual, under the state employment guidelines, to resolve this. And tho, those were my directions, and we, we acted on what was investigated and came back with. And Madam Chair, like I said, we're operating in good faith that you asked for some changes, said you wanted changes, and we're working on those changes. And that's, that's one of the reasons of asking Mr. Smith, or former Mr. Smith, that I don't intend to ask for another term. I, I don't. I'm willing to accept, uh, like I said, this time I was, uh, not going to ask to be re-elected as chair. I was hoping that Mr. Craig would step in and do that, but several of the members asked me to run again. So I said, okay, I'll, I'll put my name.
You might, you might have a, a change on that, a consensus at a board meeting.
Oh, I don't have any doubt about that. There, we're, I mean, like I said, I'm with the majority that, uh, that's why I appointed Mr. Craig as the chairman of, of the selection committee for our new CEO, recognizing that he's going to be the next chairman of the board, I believe, anyway. We, obviously, we haven't talked about it, uh, but I think that's the consensus, and I'm all in favor of that.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm let Commissioner Zonka speak, and then I'm getting ready to tie this up.
Yes, ma'am.
So you can take a break. You should be getting tired.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we cut to the chase here, Commissioner Loeb, I mean, this, this is really what it's about. The HR manager, the live-in boyfriend was the subject of the investigation, and the HR manager of the airport authority. Okay? So the CEO was protecting the HR manager, and you have been protecting the, the airport manager. So let's, that's just what's, what's occurred. So, you know, we, we can sugarcoat it, we can say an investigation, we can talk about semantics. You nailed it, as far as the, um, you know, discipline goes. You don't take discipline if you're not guilty, and that was not the recommended discipline. I mean, he said, she said, obviously, there was something there, or there would have been no suspension. So, I mean, it's up to you at this point on what you want to do, but, you know, if you've got this much of the board that's not pleased with your leadership, hasn't been pleased with the, and you've been there for 15 years, I mean, it's up to you whether or not you want to resign. But I may bring something forward next meeting, um, requesting that the governor remove you if you don't, because I think at this point, we need a clean slate. I think the fact that you're arguing with us about this, and you come up here almost arrogant and interrupt the chair when she's trying to talk, tells you sort of how you've been running your board. Commissioner Pritchett said it when she said she went to the meeting, and she watched you not allow other board members to talk. That's disturbing to me. And if other board members are feeling like they're being bullied, and trying to, trying to express concerns about the former manager and shot down in the past, I mean, that's up to you on what you want to do, but you brought yourself here today, so.
Yes, ma'am, I did. Because I wanted to give you all the opportunity, I wanted to communicate with you, and I don't know what else to tell you, uh, other than, I think you've been missing form.
Missing form by several board members, by leaders in this community that would, you would be shocked if, I would never put them out there, but somebody who runs a very large organization in this county that's very highly respected, picked up the phone and says, I can't believe that this is true. And when I got that phone, and I'll, I'm going to have them call each one of these board members, only because I would never put them out there like this, but when you have this type of organization that's reaching out to you, saying that they've been complaining for years, not just of poor, of poor management, but of absence, that he's been absent.
Who's, who's been absent?
Your airport manager.
Okay. I mean, I, 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 I will take that as.
I mean, if he's such a rotten manager, and there's money missing, and there's all this nepotism going on, and he gives 60 days to resign, and you, the finance manager who lost $170,000 gets time to resign, she'd have been, she should have been fired. And he should have been fired. But that's just my opinion. Again, we have no authority.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm done, Commissioner Pritchett. Thanks for indulging me.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, I, I, I'm really going to let this go, but I, I had to leave. We were there for a few hours. He had made the, he was going to resign. He said he had sent you the resignation letter the night before, which was good. And after I left, someone called me and said, you made a motion to extend his time past 60 days. And that really bothered me as well, Mr. Sampson. So I, I don't, I don't think.
That was at the request of the other board members.
That's not what I heard. I, I don't, I don't think you're a bad person. I just, I just, I just don't think you should be chairing the board, in my opinion. I think it, it's probably good to have somebody else step in and do this, and, um, that might, um, make it a little easier if you would do that and, and let them do that. But I, I got to tell you, I do appreciate you showing up and, and taking a meeting here today. And, um, I think we need it to be vocal with this, because I, again, you know, we'll, we'll tell you this over and over, and then you look back and say, well, there's really not a problem you don't want to be talking about. That really bothers me, too. No, you did, you did. So I, I'm just, I'm just telling you what I'm thinking, and until someone accepts responsibility and says, man, we have got a real problem here, and we got to fix it, and we, we got to communicate better, then you're going to start seeing these changes. So I'm, I'm going to cut you loose, but I do want to thank you for coming, and, um, I appreciate you standing up here and letting us speak all these things to you.
Yes, ma'am.
I thank you for that.
And I will, I will close by saying, if you would like me to turn chair over to our vice chair, I'd be happy to offer that at the next meeting.
I think you're going to have to talk to your board about that, again.
Oh, I know. I was just said.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm saying, if you want me to do that.
I think, I think that would be a good thing to do.
I'd be more than happy, I'd be more than happy to offer that at the next meeting.
I think that would be good.
I mean, you, you don't want me to call a special meeting for that, do you?
No, I think the next meeting would be appropriate, unless you have some things that are piling up from all of this, you got to change.
No, I think we're doing fine. I think we're doing fine. Like I said, I was prepared to, to step down at the last election, but several of the board members asked me, would I, will I accept the nomination again? And I said, yes.
Mr. Sampson, I, I know all that, but so much has happened since then, and they're starting to get more information now. They, they weren't getting a lot of this communication. Some of them said they have not even gotten an email from the, the airport authority about anything in months. Um, yeah, well, you heard that at the meeting.
Yeah. And like I said, that's, I've heard.
Okay. So we're fixing all that, which is good, but I, I think that would be a very good move, sir. And I think I would, I would be very, I'm impressed with you for doing that.
No, no problem, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Sandra Sullivan.
I just want to start, and just saying how grateful I am to our county commissioners and all the difficult decisions you have to make, um, and just a, a big gratitude. Um, I'm here today to talk about High Tower again, um, and I want to thank you for caring about the conservation of the site. Um, and I, I just want to bring up a, a few, um, details. The issue at hand right now is the state is saying the park is not in their purview. While the original preserve, um, application was made, um, at that time, the, the county was a partner and not a co-applicant like Pelican, because, um, the use of the park wasn't really being considered as part of the preserve. In the application, they were looking at buying a commercial piece next to Ramada, and, uh, so it wasn't really a consideration. It wasn't until they were not able to acquire that piece of property, that when you look at the revised management plan and the revised documents, that, that parcel, the actual park, is referred to as being part of the project plan. And the management plan has details in there about, you know, putting in the outlook, you know, the, uh, additional parking and so on. So the details, there was obviously, at that point, because there's an overlap, and that management agreement is for both parks. And by then, it wasn't clarified for the first preserve agreement, but in actuality, the, being the co-applicant overflowed onto the High Tower pro, project as when they weren't able to get that commercial piece. So what's at play right now, and, and what is important, is we have the sky bridge that they want to put in from a hotel, intensity hotel across the street. Commercial use is not public use. The second one is a differential in parking, which is for Brevard residents and tourists would pay, but the city residents do not. The HF radar, um, using the county park, would be using the bathrooms for their power and equipment. Um, that is not public use. Um, and intensity use by a hotel, that is not public use. Um, and there's an issue with that, with, with, that needs to be tied into this, is the Air Force responsibility with this as well. They had, were required as a federal property across the street to do what is called a Section 7 consult with United States Wildlife Service to protect it. Um, and that wasn't done. So there's some federal regulations here that are involved. So, and just to wrap up, I appreciate everything that you're doing, and, uh, I look forward to you protecting the preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. We are going to move into item H1. I have no cards on these, Commissioners. I just have one card on item H3. Ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, item H1 is just the second hearing for the Second Amendment to a developer's agreement between Benchmark Melbourne 35 Associates, Brevard County, and the City of West Melbourne. They are just, um, using their traffic equivalency matrix to swap out, um, some shopping center land used for a daycare and a medical office. So there is no net change to the matrix.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by, do you have a, you want to say something?
No, I think it's Commissioner's.
Okay, I was just looking that way. Um, Commissioner Smith, you made a motion. Commissioner Loeb, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Item H2.
And while he's getting set up there, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion approved, provided that we do not implement any fines, right, I shouldn't say fines, pardon me, but any program costs within the next 12 months. So it is motion approved, but I, I just think with COVID, especially given that some of the industries that most heavily are, are going to be impacted by this, or already heavily impacted by COVID, I, I just don't want to do anything in the next 12 months to them financially. So in terms of their, their annual program participation fee, I'd just like, and I, I don't know that it's going to happen, even if this moves with all due speed anyway in 12 months, but I, I'd just like to buy them some time.
Thank you, sir. Um, do you want to read what the item is?
Yes. Um, this would be an adoption of a fats, oils, grease management program as part of the Chapter 110 of the utilities, um, to do an adoption and, uh, amend the charter to do so.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias, is this yours?
Yes, ma'am. You want me to speak to it, Madam Chair? Uh, thank you. Uh, I think during these austere times, it's very difficult to assess a fee specifically on businesses that are going about this in the correct way. As you guys know, uh, this is dealing with fats, oils, and grease, and according to, uh, the Toho Water Authority, um, between 95, between 80 and 95% of, of businesses are doing this correctly. They're hiring a service to dispose of this. Unfortunately, that leaves anywhere between 5 and 20% that are violating this, which causes obviously problems, uh, with all of our utilities. Um, it, it's outlined that this cost somewhere in the neighborhood of, um, $175,000. Uh, that's two FTE plus trucks. So the plan that was put out here, um, the department plan, uh, I, I've put out, um, it has total revenue of $75,000. That is registration fee of $100, there being approximately 500 locations generating $50,000. If you assume the violations are, uh, as given out by Toho, um, it would garnish another $25,500 in revenue, uh, for a total of $75,500. Uh, I think that, uh, assessing a $100 fee on businesses that are struggling right now, and are, the bulk of them are participating, uh, correctly by hiring a outside firm to collect these fats, oils, and greases, and dispose of them correctly, would be incorrect. However, it's very important, I believe, that we find these violators and, and punish them. So I have a fee structure here that is no registration fee, but has a much more stiff penalty, uh, on, on the folks that are violating. It raises about 80% of the fees generated with the registration fee. As you can see, it's $500 a first violation, $1,000 a second violation, and $2,000 a third violation. I'm not married to these numbers, uh, but this would get the revenue to a closer place to support, uh, those, uh, those two FTE. So, um, I, I think it's difficult to ask the department to swallow $175,000, uh, but, um, this puts them close to where they were, uh, prior, and does not create a new fee specifically on businesses that are doing it. And by the way, uh, and I found this out, thank you, uh, for staff, but the $500, it's 250 per, because they have to find the violation, and they have to check up on the violation, so that's 500. It's, uh, 1,000 is 500 and 500, there's a violation and then a checkup, so that's, that's where I got these numbers. It's just a suggestion that doesn't penalize, uh, because I can't vote for something that, that would, uh, create a new fee in these times, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. So Commissioner Tobias, you would anticipate at what point the fees would be in place? A year from now?
It's a, Madam Chair? My hope is that there never would be, uh, a registration fee. I mean, ideally, uh, the number of violations decrease, you could decrease the FTE to one, uh, you would have a reoccurring cost of somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000. Uh, you would obviously only need to buy one vehicle at that point, so the, uh, unit cost would drop from 175,000, uh, down to 60,000. So, um, you know, there may be a loss, but I, I think staff can speak specifically of the aggregate savings to not having these fats, oils, and greases in our utility systems that causes all sorts of, uh, uh, problems.
Yeah, I, I am very familiar with the fact that what oils and greases and those kinds of things do to systems. So that's why I'm looking at this favorably, but you raise, both of you raise very interesting points. What are your thoughts with regard to Mr. Tobias, Commissioner Tobias's proposal?
Um, so when we prepared this, I mean, first of all, as a department, we're, we're excited about this, because the, the primary purpose of this is really as a preventative maintenance program, which is, um, and I think everyone is, uh, the technical language. In terms of the fee structure, um, Mr. Tobias is correct, the, the FD, you know, the annual cost is about 170,000. The intention of this was not to be per se a, a revenue generator, but more of an emphasis of covering, um, administration fees and to offset some of the costs. In terms of the, the structure, and if it's the commission's wish to make it more fine-oriented rather than to offset the administration fees, we don't have an issue with that.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm just, I'm torn here, because I agree with you that I don't like the idea of fees on our businesses that are already hurting, but at the same time, looking forward, I like the idea that the people that are benefiting, or maybe that's not the right word, the people that are, um, potentially causing the problem, that they would support through their fee structure, um, keeping the, the, the systems clean and functioning. So I'm, I'm with you initially, but I think a year from now, that the fees would be appropriate. That's my personal opinion.
Commissioner Loeb?
Madam Chair, I actually, uh, I'm a little bit swayed here by what Commissioner Tobias
Madam Chair, I actually am a little bit swayed here by what Commissioner Tobias mentioned. I'm going to go ahead and rescind my, or withdraw my initial motion. And I just kind of want to get a feel here to see where folks are at with this. And any of this, you know, I understand that we don't want people polluting now, but again, you're talking about an industry that frankly has not had these requirements in place. I would like to buy them 12 months. I don't know frankly that we could put this in place immediately anyway, even if, if we, we hit every, every stoplight correctly with it being green. So what I'd like to see, and I'm happy to make a motion if people would support it, at least at present, and we could revisit it in a year, Commissioner Smith, if you'd like, to, to basically take the District 3 plan that was passed out, set the registration fee right now at zero. I'd like to increase the violations though, because frankly, we really want to discourage people and disincentivize them from putting fats, oils, and greases into the drain. So I would be fine instead of 500 for a first violation, making it 1,000. Instead of 1,000 for a second, ramping it up substantially to 2,500. And for a third, making it 5,000. I think that's really going to get the message across. You know, the, the goal being to have people not put the stuff in the drain, you know, not to, to make money on, on registration. And frankly, as Commissioner Tobias pointed out, there, there is a, a variable that's not quantified in this in that it's less, it's less strain on our system over and above the environmental considerations cost-wise. We don't have the issues as much with lift stations in particular if we keep this stuff out. So I, I think we're, we're having a savings over and above that. So I would, if you guys are okay with it, I'd make a motion, again, not to implement any, any fees or fines whatsoever for 12 months from today's date, or I should say, no sooner than 12 months from today's date. I'd take his plan, leave the registration fee at zero, raise the first violation to 1,000, raise the second to 2,500, and the third to 5,000. If you guys are good with it, that's my motion.
Chair, may I add another point to, if I may? And, and again, in the, in the structure of the ordinance, and by no means, Commissioner, just to bring light with regard to the, the fines, it also includes a component with code enforcement. So in addition to that, there, as, as businesses or facilities that were out of compliance, we would also be initiating the code enforcement policy. And as you know, that's a lengthy process before you get to the point of actually implementing a daily fee associated with that. But I just wanted to make note that you were aware of that.
I appreciate that, sir. Yeah, and I, you know, my thought, if you want to, to go through that process with respect to a violation prior to 12 months, that's fine, as long as there's not that financial component, at least as far as my motion contemplates. But once you hit that magic 12-month mark, at that point, I don't have an issue with you putting in place these, these fines. My, you know, my hesitation really has been with respect to the fees, but yeah, it's a great idea. If we can raise the fines and get rid of the fees altogether and really just punish the folks that are hurting the system, you know what? That's, that's brighter than what I had thought to do, so I, I give credit where it's due.
So you're saying, Eddie, that you need time to implement this?
This is a minimum of a year. I mean, the, right now, what we would have to do, and, and, you know, not to get ahead of myself, but if this ordinance were to pass, we do have a vacancy, there is an F, there is a position description specialized, there is a level of training needed, we would have to advertise and fill that position and start creating a database in order to collect this. So even, even on that and taking into account, I mean, it's a year. So if the board wishes to make it where there's a, a period of 12 months, like it's being discussed, I have no issue with that. I have no fear.
So in other words, we could initiate this today, but without anything going forward for 12 months. That way, you're, in 12 months, you're, you're in place and you're ready to go.
And if it's the comfort of the board to give 12 months, we have no issue with that.
Okay. So I would, I would go along with that. As far as the violation fees, I can tell you, having employed an awful lot of people over the years, you can have a lot of good things in place, but you can have an idiot that's working for you that just gets lazy and nobody's looking. And $500 is a pretty good deterrent, but I think $1,000 is overboard personally.
If, if you want me to modify the notion, that's okay.
For your first, for your first offense, you know, you're going to, you being the employer, you're going to fire that person soon as you find out about it, so.
That's fine. I'll, I'll leave, I'll, I'll leave the first as 500, so zero for the registration, 500 for the first, but I would like for the second and third to raise it up to 2,500 and 5,000.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I've got a recommendation, because Commissioner Tobias, I like this idea, sir. If we make zero registration fee, keep first violation at 300, move the second violation up to 1,500, and the, and the third one up to 3,000, because I, well, maybe even less for the second, I don't know, like Commissioner Smith was saying. I think it would, it would really send a message, if you don't fix your stuff, it's going to cost you. But the first violation, like Commissioner Smith said, it could just be something that would have happened. And so I, I like the structure that we, that Commissioner Tobias put out here. I think it's a good idea and I support it, sir. So just, just a thought there to keep the registration at first, at the minimum, and then start chipping up the others to reach that kind of delta with the money that you're looking at trying to recover.
Madam Chair, would you consider at least for the third, keeping it substantially higher? Because at that point, I, I think someone really is just not getting the message at that point. I'm okay keeping the first at something more nominal, because as Commissioner Smith said, if you just have someone that's a dummy that does the wrong thing.
The second one, 1,500? Commissioner Tobias?
If you're, if you're good with.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
If, if you're good keeping the third at five, I really would like to see that, because that's someone that's just repeatedly offended.
Well, I'll tell you something else that happens. If you, if you have a first offense, like I said, if you have an idiot, and I'm not going to mince words, it's, somebody can be an idiot. And you make it very clear to the rest of your employees that this is not cool.
Yeah.
The rest of the employees typically get the message and they kind of police themselves. And I'm not saying that they don't get complacent, because if six months or a year or two years go by and they don't have an infraction, by then you've hired, you've gone through numerous idiots, and now you got new ones. So, yeah, the, I, I like 300, 1,500. What was your third suggestion?
I was hoping to do five for the third. I mean, if you're more comfortable, Commissioner, I could, I could do four. I just think three.
Yeah, I think that's a little tough. What's y'all thoughts? Commissioner Smith?
Three grand would be good.
Yeah, okay. Do we, do we still hit the same delta of what you're trying to accomplish?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I don't care. And I just, these numbers were off estimates that I received from Eddie. But anyway, yours, change it to a total revenue collection through fines, to be very clear.
Yes, sir.
63,000. So the ones that I put there were 60,000. I'm, I'm perfectly acceptable. I wasn't married to any of these numbers. My goal was just to get us to as, to cover as much of, of the administrative costs either way. So I'm, I'm a-okay with any change. In fact, I purposely tried to hold the first violation down, so you even went a step further than that. And, and I think that folks that inadvertently do this, and I don't know if it's an inadvertent issue, I honestly don't, but I have a lot more comfortable thoughts at being 300 instead of 500. And we still, and would hopefully collect more.
You know, I want to, I want to, excuse me, I want to throw something out too. Maybe we should consider renewing this over a period of time. Again, because if I'm in business and I've got a restaurant and I've had a violation in, say, 2015, and now we're at 2025, I've got a whole bunch of new employees and, so you can see where I'm going here.
You want to say in a 36-month period?
I, I would limit it, I would say like five years. If you had, it would renew after five years.
So every, every five years?
Yeah.
Or how about, because here's what I'm thinking, because rather than washing it as a clean slate at five, if they're four years and eight months out, and they have two violations, they have a third violation, you know, less than a year later, I'd like it to continue to amount. How about in the, we can say in the preceding five years? So X number of violations in the preceding five years. That way, we kind of always have it keeping current. And then obviously, for the, the first year, there, there really is no preceding five, so it just, you know, it starts fresh, but.
Yeah.
I, I'd be comfortable with that, if you want to do that. So zero for the, the fee, 300 for the first, 2,500 for the second, and 3,000 for the third for the pre, and then we would, we would count violations from the preceding five years up to whatever the current date is when they're, when they're looking at it. Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion that accordingly, then if, if you all are good with it.
I'm good with everything you said, except I'm, I like 1,500 for the second violation.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I misspeak? So 300 for the first, 1,500 for the second, and 3,000 for the third, and zero for the registration? And then we, I'm sorry.
Let me, I'm sorry, I like that idea. Can I ask his opinion on the five-year?
I'd love, I'd love to hear it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I only say this for, for, to make sure of clarity. So the way the program would work, if, I don't know, I'm full of analogies. So if you're a deep-fried chicken place, we go there and we expect, we do one inspection, that's the first violation. We come back on a subsequent date that we agree it to, it's not done, that's the second violation. We come back on the third visit and it's all addressed, the clock starts back to zero.
Is that what you have been doing?
Well, we don't have a fats, oils, this is how the ordinance is structured. So, so the idea of it is, is, you know, we're not, at least from our perspective, we're not trying to penalize, we're just trying to get people in compliance. Once you're in compliance and you've shown you've done what needed to get done, the clock starts over again.
I think this will do it. If you go back consistently to make sure they fix their problem?
Yeah, it's just, I, I'm not sure, and forgive me if I'm not following it, this five-year window, I just want to make sure there's not a, the number of violations within a five-year period. The clock starts back, you go back to having a clean slate once you've shown.
After five years?
No.
No.
After they've taken through the problem, he's saying that.
So hypothetically, if we go to your facility, today we find you in violation, and I, forget it, forgive me, whatever the, whatever we agreed to through the first violation, I've heard 300, I've heard 500.
300.
So that would be one. The subsequent visit, then, we would come back 30, 45 days to give that business owner time to get logistics and whatnot. If we, we go back there, we charge them for that fee. If that, if it's still not done, we would go to the third. But after the second visit, which we're hoping this is what the case is, after the second visit, once it's done, the way the ordinance is, we would charge, right now, the way the ordinance is written is $150. And so the intent of the $150 was more the effort for our inspector to go out there. So after that, if on the second visit, everything was clear, we would just charge the $150, and then your clock would go back to zero with a clean slate. I don't know if that makes sense.
That's not the motion, though. The motion, you, if you go for the first one, obviously, that's a first fine. If you go back, whether it's 30 days or 45 days later, it's a second fine. If they correct it at that point, obviously, there's no second fine there. But a year later, if you come back and they have what otherwise, with what you're contemplating would have been a first fine, that's now a second fine. So it tracks over the preceding five years.
Okay.
Commissioner Zonka?
I would just say, and these are annual inspections, Craig.
The way the ordinance is written is that we can do up to two preventative inspections a year.
You can do up to two.
Up to two.
So I would just say, instead of making this five-year limit and stuff and muddying that up, I would say, obviously, if you find someone out of compliance or in violation, put them on the next six-month visit.
That's.
And that way, that would eliminate that. That way, they can't go back to doing bad things if we'll go in there six months later to make sure they're in compliance.
Well, I.
Because if they're an offender, then, because I think you run into, you're going to get, if it's a small business, you're going to get people who just aren't going to pay. I mean, they're going to say, you know, I don't know. I just think that we're making, we don't, we have nothing in place now.
Or it got figured out.
You know what I'm saying? So we're not like saving the, saving the planet by trying to overkill it. I think allow them to put it in place the way it sits, and if it's a problem, I'm sure you'll bring it back to us.
Yes.
But, that's just me.
Well, you, you make good points. I'm just concerned about punishing this person ad infinitum. That's why I wanted to put the limit on it.
Oh, no, I like the limit as far as the fines go and all that other stuff, and I'm okay with, you know, the zero fine to begin with. What I'm concerned about is, you know, if they're in violation again in two years even, it may, it may not be on purpose, or it may be a switched ownership or whatever, we're not going back and charging them for third and fourth violation because they've been fined the previous two years ago.
Right. Well, that would do the same thing. I, I don't want to see them penalized because three years have gone by and.
Right.
He or she has a whole new crew that weren't there three years ago and aren't even aware of it. You, as the employer, you're telling your people, but I can tell you, sometimes when you talk to people that are, your minimum wage goes in one ear and out the other.
But these, these places will have, will have things in place that catch the grease and that sort of thing. So hopefully, those won't go away between employees. But I like the way it's written. I like the modification that Commissioner Tobias suggested. I'm okay with increasing those third and fourth, but I like the number zero for the registration, because then that doesn't put a burden on them today, especially right now.
So how about preceding 18 months, then? That seems to be kind of a, a way to resolve that you're, you're not going to be punishing someone for employees that have come and gone.
I think, I think I agree with Commissioner Zonka on this. I think Commissioner Smith was there as well, that it's going to be an occurrence and you're going to take care of it, because, you know, he could have a whole nother situation later.
That's right.
And, and they'll be trying to take care of it. So I, I think what you're saying is, you go in and if you have a problem, you go back, and that's the problem they got to fix, and we can figure out later, because that's what you're saying, you don't want to penalize somebody for having a dumb staff, kind of making it to the point here. So I, I'm in agreement with that, with the change of the rate structure, so that the earlier offenders, they're not getting hit so hard, but if they're just blatant and not fixing it, they're probably the ones that need to pay for this service, so.
So, Madam Chair?
Did I sum that up?
Let me ask you, because.
Hold on just a second. Commissioner Snarty, is that what you're saying, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I, I could get on board, I, depending on what we do with that third violation, but my thought, I think part of the reason the third violation, we were kind of batting down some as a board, was because we didn't want to punish someone a year and a half later for something that had happened previously that, that really was perhaps not even in their control. I would support it that way, if we raised that third violation up some. But if you're talking about they're coming back every 45 days, and they do it a third time and they still have an issue, obviously, they're not getting that message. And it's not because they had one dumb employee, it's because they had just no willingness to get it fixed. So I would really ask that you all consider doing something higher than three. You know, I would support it, but that third violation, to me, it's just one of those, you, you got to send a message at that point, because it's not been received up till then.
I, I hear you, sir. I don't know where the other commissioners are, but I think I'm comfortable at three, because by then, they will have had to pay almost $5,000. So I, I think by then, either they're going to get it fixed, or it's going to be a little bit painful, so.
Chair, would it help if, if language, when we talk about first, second, third, we're talking in consecutive order? So basically, we come out once, that's the first violation, we come out following up on the first one, and obviously, they're still not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I like that better.
And then after, once you get to the third, obviously, but once they get to a point where they say they've done it and we're agreeance with it, the clock starts back.
Yeah, I like that.
I guess what Commissioner Smith and Snarty, Zonka said, sorry, we almost still do that.
Okay.
So, and Commissioner Loebur, are you okay with that starting out?
I'm okay with that. I, I would just ask you to, to consider anything higher than three, and I'm, even if you throw me a little bit of a bone here, let me feel like I won on something.
3,001?
Can we do 3250? It's not even 10%. Give me something. I just want to feel like I got something to do.
Just because I like you.
You say 3,003, we got a deal. How about that?
$3,003.
All right, that's fine. You want to make the motion? I'll, I'll withdraw my prior.
I can't, one of them would have to.
That's right.
Commissioner Tobias, are you good, sir? It was your.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is my fault. I just didn't want there to be a new fee assessed.
It was smart. It was really smart.
So, as long as there's no new fee assessed and we punish the people that are doing the bad instead of those that are doing correctly, I'm okay with absolutely anything.
Okay, do I have a commissioner that will make a motion, so I can let Mr. Fontaine off the hook?
I'll make a motion that we eliminate the fees. We have first violation of three, second violation of 1,500, third violation of 3,000, and.
$3,000.
$3,003.
I'll second that.
That's so weird.
And that if these are all concurrent, then they're consecutive, but if they're not, then the clock is reset.
Second?
Second.
I'll, I'll go ahead and second it. Ms. Bentley, are we good, Joe?
Commissioner Zonka beat you to it.
Okay, I have a motion.
Can we stop talking about this now?
Yes, yes, ma'am. At least it's a little bit funnier than the last one. I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Zonka. All in favor, say aye. I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Zonka. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. All right, we're moving into item H3.
That was fine.
I do have one card on this, as well. Sir?
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, this is a petition to vacate part of an 18-foot-wide strip of land, uh, running parallel to the east right-of-way on Highway A1A. It's located in Melbourne Beach, south of Melbourne Causeway, and east of Highway, Highway A1A. In addition to the card, we know that, um, at least seven people have contacted our office with concerns over this.
Thank you, sir. I do have one card, so, Commissioner Tobias, are you good if I call the card first? Thank you, sir. Ms. Barbara Tucirone? Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Barbara Tucirone. So you were close.
Thank you.
Um, my, my concern on this is that the, um, I'm the president for the HOA, and our property is directly across the street from this property. Our understanding, many years ago, that this pro, uh, the, the plot on which they're talking about, where this easement runs, is, um, was sold to FTHOT, and I don't know if we have all of our information correct. We've tried to contact the powers-to-be and did not get an answer, and that's why I'm here today. Our legal counsel has instructed me to make an appearance, and we're waiting for complete explanation of why this right-of-way is being vacated. If that property, if that section of A1A ever requires a turning lane, we would lose, they would, that property is already assessed for that section, but we would come into our property and lose our whole front entrance. So, we want exact explanation as to why this is being vacated. And, uh, it clearly states, we, there are no phone numbers, except for the information that we received from the Homeowners Association. And it says right-of-way, and it states very clearly on here, "The area of right-of-way has not been used for any transportation purposes and will be used for the development of the property." We wanted clarification as to what transportation purposes meant. And that's what legal counsel, we were all looking at. We need to understand. I've been explained by Mr. Scott that they have no way to access the property. And again, that's what we want to hear today. If there is absolutely no way to, to have an ingress or egress to the property, then we understand it. But we just want to make sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tobias, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think in your packet, and unfortunately, it was like 30 pages, but there is one that's pretty telling. The piece that we're discussing runs the full length of the property. So, in other words, if we don't go forward with this, technically, uh, the, the future residents and the current developer would either have to, uh, come by sea or come by air. So, um, this is an oversight, something that, uh, would not diminish anyone's access to the beach, because I got a few emails that this is, uh, parallel to A1A. So people still would have, you know, access to trans, uh, transverse it while, while walking past, but it would fairly give access to, uh, either the current developer or the future residents. So I certainly have no problem with this, and will be voting to support it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, motion to, uh, support the, uh, right-of-way.
Second?
Can't. Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Lober. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. I'm going to call a five-minute break here, and we'll be back at five minutes till 11:00.
[music]
[music] Is the commission's coming back? If I could have, um, item J, there you are, Mr. Krannis. Good morning. All right. Call us back to order? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, item J1 is a recommendation from the tourist development council to provide a cultural grant to the Cocoa Beach Air Show. Just a quick analysis that we did showed that there is an expectation of about 40,000 spectators, with a possibility of half of those being, um, from outside the county. So it is a major generator of tourism. So, um, obviously, we're supportive of that.
Sir, would you tell us the amount of the grant, sir?
Sure. The, uh, grant they're asking for is just a touch over 94,000. I think it's 94,196.
And one quick question, I'm gonna give it to Commissioner Lober after this. Have we typically done this grant in the past?
This is a, this is, would be considered a special grant. It's not part of the cultural grant program that was approved by the board, um, you know, five or six months ago. It's a special request. Um, and one of the things we are looking at, uh, at the committee level, is perhaps establishing a, a grant program for larger events like this that have a bigger impact across the destination. But right now, that, this was, uh, this was a request directly to the TDC outside of the normal grant cycle.
Okay. Have we ever given grants to the air show before?
I believe in, historically, not in recent years. They've gotten, they've gotten their normal cultural grants. But I believe a number of years ago, they did get, uh, larger grants. I believe the last grant that they received was in the 50,000 range, but that was, again, that was like eight, nine years ago, so it was quite a, quite a long time ago.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lober?
I won't take up too much time going over this unless folks have specific questions. But, you know, the bottom line, from my perspective, this is something that'll benefit the community. With TDC projects, obviously, we're required legally to consider whether one of the, the primary motivating purposes or one of the primary goals is, is driving tourism. Now, with that said, there's, there's no question, based on the metrics, and I'm sure Brian's got a, a great slideshow, if, if anyone's interested or hasn't seen it. But what I, what I'll tell you is, over and above bringing tourists into the area, which it certainly will do, it also is a treat for everyone that's here. I think, given the fact that, that people have been cooped up now for the better part of a year as a result of COVID, we've not had, for the first time in my lifetime, and actually, longer than that, any air show in the county this past year. It's nice to have something come back. The last time this was done in Cocoa Beach was 2012, so we're talking nine years ago. Obviously, the TDT has grown substantially in that amount of time. The lineup, even the, the lineup that's been announced to date for this air show is absolutely incredible. Uh, I think that's putting it lightly. Some of the stuff that I've heard, sort of, um, from the grapevine that, that is lined up to happen but hasn't been formalized and by extension announced yet, really ought to make this one of the greatest air shows in, in the state. So what I can tell you from my perspective, I think 40,000 may well be even a conservative number. If you look at the fact that we've had a huge gap, an unprecedented gap, for a number of decades in not having had something like this come back, I can tell you, I've, I've worked with Brian for probably the better part of a couple of years on this. Once I heard that Melbourne was losing the air show, that's when I, I reached out to him to say, "Hey, what do we need to do to bring it back?" At first, um, let me just go in back a little ways. I went, went out and reached out to Space Florida to look at using the SLF. For one or several reasons, that didn't work out. Pardon me here. I'm sorry. But the, the bottom line is, we now have a, we have a solution to bring it back, to bring back a proven successful show, to do it in a, a show in a setting that's safe, to do it right in the dead center of the county, in a great area. Uh, I, I think this is stellar. I can tell you, the sheriff's office has offered to provide auxiliary and reserve deputies for the program to bring it back as well. There were a lot of partners that, that took place, or that, that took part in the, um, the meetings that we had on the front end. Patrick Air Force Base allowed their field to be used for military aircraft, Tyco. We talked with Tyco. Tyco said we can use their fields for civilian aircraft. Uh, a lot of folks, from the, the mayor and the city manager at Cocoa Beach, to the folks out in Patrick, to folks in public safety in, in the county, all chimed in in terms of their concerns. All the concerns were addressed. What I can tell you is, yes, this is a substantially higher grant than they were last given, but the circumstances are substantially different. This is, again, the first time that we've had over a year gap, or a year gap without an air show in longer than I've been alive. The other thing is the TDT, especially if we, we put COVID to the side, has grown substantially since they received their last grant. I can tell you, the, the other item that's hard to quantify, uh, but that, that absolutely factors into my support, pardon me, is that Valiant Air Command also is, is playing a part in this as well. So, with respect to, um, to Valiant, the, the game plan is, every other year, Valiant will do a show at Tyco. They're not gonna have competition from this show, and every other year, the plan is to bring it back to Cocoa Beach. So this is something where, in, in the past, the last time we had shows, I think a couple of weeks from one another, we had the Valiant show, and we had this show. Yes, it's, it's a different type of show, but there are only so many people that are interested in air shows. So there was a little parasitism, um, just based on the proximity in terms of timing to have the two shows. So to have, um, a, a bang-up stellar show that we have not had, uh, for some time, certainly since 2012 for Cocoa Beach, and frankly, since, um, '19 for anywhere in the county, I, I think this is a great opportunity. I think it's gonna be great for the folks that live here. I think it's gonna fill, uh, fill the hotels, put heads in beds. Uh, I can tell you that I went to the Fort Lauderdale show that Brian put on during COVID. Uh, and I will tell you that if, if people wanted to stay six feet apart, they absolutely were able to do that without a problem. Uh, if you want to be careless about it, just like in, in any other setting, certainly, there are opportunities to be careless. But if, if you want to stay six or 10 feet from someone, you can easily do that at the air show, have a great view. Uh, what I'll tell you as well, as far as the, the folks, the locals, where I, I really do like to see a local benefit for something like this, over and above the tourism driver. When you, when you look at air shows, I did something that probably no one else in the crowd was doing in Fort Lauderdale. Instead of looking to the east and up, into the, the box over the ocean, I looked to the west and slightly up to see how many of the balconies were full. They were slammed. All of the folks that had condos, all the folks that were in hotels, they were all out on their balconies. I mean, it was a rarity to see something empty. So I, I think this will be a, a well, a, a well-deserved treat for the locals. I think it'll drive in a lot of tourism. I think it sets the stage very well for the coming years, both bouncing back and forth between Valiant and the Cocoa Beach Air Show. Um, I, I think this is a winner. You know, if, if, if there's a concern with respect to doing a grant of this nature, all I could see is, is really the amount. And I think, given how much the, the TDT has grown in the past several years, and given what the impact is with respect to not having had a show in some time, I, I think the amount difference is, is totally justified. So I'll, I'll go ahead and move to approve the, the grant as requested, the agenda item.
Motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Smith. But Commissioner Tobias, do you still have a light on? You were there and you disappeared. Okay.
I want to thank staff and, uh, TDC for putting this together. Unfortunately, for a couple of reasons, I have to vote no on this. Number one is, was mentioned here as a reason why it probably was a good program. I'm on the other end. I think we need to look at these as far as incentive versus rewards. You heard that, you know, this is scheduled, there are dates. In fact, we now have, uh, a certain aerial, uh, teams that have decided to come and show up. So now we, instead of incentivizing, we are doing, uh, the opposite. We are rewarding folks for making that decision. And number two, uh, was also brought up, the process. The TDC subcommittee did not review the vast majority of the grants. They, they do that, they did not for this. So there's no scoring that we have compared, comparing it to other cultural ones. Again, I appreciate all the work, but for those two reasons, I gotta vote no on this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zonka? And then you're up, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, what I didn't see, and I know the minutes aren't available yet, is the breakdown, like, what is the justification for the $100,000? I mean, I saw the slide, slide presentation. I saw the possible, you know, results of what it could mean. But I don't see $100,000, because really, that's, even though it's 94 and change, it's because a grant was already rewarded, and the previous grant- And the previous grant that was rewarded was the typical amount that most events get, 5,000, you know, roughly. But it's specific to where the person shows the need. So I'm curious to find out the breakdown of why the $100,000.
If you want to address it, or I can, whatever you want.
I'm asking Peter, if that's okay?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So the analysis that we did, we went back and looked at the grant program and what those other recipients generated in terms of number of visitors and then economic impact in terms of visitor spending. And this really exceeded it by tenfold. So we're looking at a potential of 20,000 tourists versus a lot of those other grants maybe generated 1,000 or 2,000 and about a four to four and a half million dollar economic impact where a lot of the, again, a lot of those grant recipients were, you know, in the hundreds of thousands. So it was a... It was the scale. It's at a totally different level. And again, I had mentioned earlier, I think the committee has met since then, and they now know about this, and they're interested in looking at the possibility of establishing a major event grant program that would award grants in advance to programs like this because these have the biggest impact on tourism than, you know, pretty much anything else that we've seen.
Because I am not opposed to the air show. I think it's a great idea. I think it's great what it brings to the area. I just don't know that we should be subsidizing a private organization in order to put these events on. It makes me a little nervous, you know, especially considering that this isn't something that we've had in place in the past. And this is not something that we've done for Melbourne before Melbourne lost their show. So although I think it's, you know, I think it's got potential, I think it's a great idea, I just don't like how this was put together. And I think $100,000 is a lot of money, considering that tourism dollars are down. So I can't support this.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm with you guys as far as spending $100,000, but the other side of the coin is, I think that there's a substantial return on investment available to us, particularly from the standpoint of what it brings to the area. And what it brings is an awful lot of interest, it creates regional interest, even when, for days ahead of time. Anybody that takes the time to look skyward and follow their ears are going to see these planes practicing. And that's as much fun for me. I live on the Indian River, and they do an awful lot of their practice over the river itself. And it's a lot of fun to see them do their barrel rolls and their... Go straight up and come straight down and all that kind of stuff. So I'm sure I'm not alone in that. A lot of people see that. And so it's not just a one afternoon event. It's a... It's at least a two-day, maybe even a three-day event when you factor in the practice. So I think it's a good idea for the region.
Commissioner Loeb, I'm going to talk first, just so you can answer my questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know you'll want to, once I'm done. Quick question, Mr. Cranis. I think the air show is amazing, too, big crowds. So here's one question, and the risk of sounding dumb in a commission meeting, I'm going to do it anyways. These aren't typical funds that we use here, so where are we taking these funds from? And what's the unforeseen consequence? Or if... Because I know, like, the beach, we get a nine-to-one grant. Is it taking money out of there that we wouldn't have enough? It's not?
No, ma'am. So all of these funds for these cultural grants come out of the 5% that's been allocated by ordinance. So it's part of that bucket of money, and it can only be spent on these types of functions that generate tourism. So it's very specific.
So to do the 100,000 here, who's having to pay for that? There's something not getting something. So what are we looking at, so I can just kind of?
Sure. So how it breaks down, out of that cultural fund, we have a number of events that are not going to occur.
Okay.
As a result of COVID, they're canceled, or they're going to do virtual events. So out of the original pot of money that was approved by the board, it was 175,000. We think somewhere in the $10,000 to $15,000 range are not going to happen.
Okay.
So those go back into the pot, and those are available to be used. We also have balance forward funds. We just received our balance forward numbers the other day, and we have 121,000 in balance forward, so we can use those funds to allocate for something like this. And then the remainder of those funds can then be put into the pot for next year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just a few things I want to point out. I think there are a couple of questions that I want to add a little more response to. So as far as Commissioner Zonka's questions about what the money is going to, there are a couple of things I think that are noteworthy. And certainly, I don't pretend to know each and every cost that's associated with putting on a show, but two big ones that I think bear worth mentioning are the costs of live streaming and online are in the high tens of thousands. That is a substantial cost for them to do. The other thing is, in doing that, that will provide a tourism benefit to the area. When you see Cocoa Beach Air Show everywhere and you have an incredible number of folks, and the metrics were discussed at the TDC meeting, watching that, that gives us a great return as well. In addition to that, 25,000 is going to Valiant Air Command so that they can fly a slew of their own aircraft in the show. So they're... In that chunk, you probably have the vast majority of the 100,000 just between those two expenses. The other thing, as far as providing money to private orgs, you know, we do that routinely with this variety of grant. I don't know of any public orgs that we've funded. I'm not saying there aren't any, but the vast majority of this money goes toward private orgs when you look at the cultural funds or anything of that sort. You know, just like Health First is a nonprofit private org, the foundation that's putting this on is a nonprofit private org that puts on scholarships and does things of that nature. What I would say is, if you look back to the ultimate question, what is the ROI that we get? The ROI is a clear winner on this. We bring in an incredible number of tourists. We get an incredible number of locals over and above as a bonus. It's almost like a BOGO. We get to bring them out, let them have an enjoyable time. If they don't want to go to the beach and watch a show, you know, wonderful, they can do it from their balcony. The show would not be doable but for having some form of grant process with it because it's at a beach. They can't monetize that nearly as easily. With respect to rewarding versus incentivizing, as Commissioner Tobias mentioned, I would get that, but for knowing the history with respect to this. When I approached Brian Lilly to discuss this with him, as soon as the news came out that his show was no longer going to be at Melbourne, I told him point-blank, if we can work the numbers out and they're reasonable, I will go to bat for you with TDC, and I will go to bat for you with the commission. I can't guarantee you anything other than my one vote, but I can tell you, if we can put something on that's feasible, that's reasonable, I'll go to bat for you. So, you know, his reliance upon my willingness to at least go to bat for him to do what is, in my opinion, in the county and the district's interest to do, I can't fault him for doing that. I don't think this is simply rewarding him. I think this is me following through with a promise to do what I could to try to go to bat, which he relied on in putting this together. So again, if someone has a specific question about, you know, the live streaming costs, I don't know the breakdown as well as he does, but I promise you, he can give you very specific numbers and very specific answers if you're curious.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zonka?
Yeah, my issue isn't with money going necessarily to a private organization. My issue is that it's $100,000 in a special grant that other organizations were not entitled to nor asked to apply for. That's my primary issue, and that's a lot of money. And I'm sure if, you know, luckily for this air show, you did go to bat and you did bring it to the TDC, and you went to Brian to try to get this done, I just don't know that it's a fair and equitable process, and it's a lot of money. It's not a $5,000 or $10,000 grant. You're talking $100,000. So again, it wasn't scored, it wasn't compared, it wasn't offered to other organizations. So that's sort of my issue. So it's not anybody's fault. It just is what it is, and the TDC voted to push it through, but I can't vote for it today.
Commissioner Loeb, do you know what the ROI is on this?
I'll have to defer in terms of Peter's analysis. What I will tell you, though, is the most comparable event that they found in terms of locale and in terms of general variety is Thunder on the Beach. So I believe the numbers when we last had that were about 44,000, 45,000 that attended.
Yes, sir.
So, and that's a recurring event. This is going to be something that's coming back for the first time. There is a ton of publicity. So I think you're going to get, in terms of number of individuals, you know, we can divide it out and figure out how many of those are local versus folks that are coming in for tourism purposes from outside of the county. But Brian, I know he's got slides and specific numbers on that. It's a solid double-digit percent that come from outside of county.
Is it a two-to-one return on investment dollars?
Easily. It's probably in the 40 to 45-to-one range.
Forty... Forty-five. Okay. As I said, two-to-one's not very good.
Yeah. So for an event, you want, you know, at least get up to the, into the 20s, and this is significantly beyond that. And then, yet to Commissioner Loeb's point, we looked at not only Thunder on the Beach, but we also looked at the air show that Mr. Lilly conducted down in Fort Lauderdale, and about half of the people coming to view it were from outside of that area. So, you know, there's a really good opportunity to generate tourism through this.
I know when we have them, where we have them, where we have them up in our area, everybody, the streets line up, every parking lot. So it is, it's probably like maybe a fourth of a lunch traffic. It's pretty significant. Mr. Cranis, can you tell me the total cost of this, to do this? I mean, how much are they asking us for? Are they asking us for 10% of their cost, or?
I believe their total budget is just under 400,000. So this would be about a fourth of that.
25%. Let's see my other question. Okay, so here's a thought, too, and I'm... How much... After we do this, how much money is left in this account to do other things for other businesses?
Well, for this year, the grants had already been awarded for this current fiscal. So we're going now into...
The new one?
The next round of grants will be for the next fiscal year. I haven't done a full budget yet, so I don't know what the numbers will be for next year. But from the balance forward, we'll have about 40,000 or so left over from our balance forward that will get added to whatever our budget is next year.
Okay. I... Here's... My hesitation is that we just kind of double what we did in the past. But then, on the pro side of it, the hotels were hit so hard in that area for COVID. It's almost nice getting these events in to fill them up a little bit because that's where all these funds come from. So I'm hesitant, as Commissioner Zonka said, that we started a new grant and those types of items. When is this air show, sir?
It's the... It's two weeks after Easter, so it's the third week of April, third weekend in April.
Okay. So that's my only hesitation. I'm leaning towards supporting it just because I think for the traffic on Cocoa Beach is important. So that's just what I'm thinking right now. Commissioner Loeb?
Madam Chair, just another thing to keep in mind, and when I'm talking about big expenses, it doesn't mean there aren't a slew of little expenses as well.
Yeah, I know.
One of them, for instance, they got a, you know, multi-thousand-dollar bill just to rent out Lori Wilson, which is coming right back to us. So there is a lot that does offset this. You know, certainly, and I'm rounding here, you're looking at about five grand going back just to use Lori Wilson. So there are others that, you know, other items that go into this that are certainly quantifiable, but, you know, individually, they don't necessarily amount to a lot. But when you start aggregating them, there is a huge return. When I looked at this and when I talked to Brian a couple of years ago about putting something like this on, one of the items that was important to me was exactly what you mentioned. What did they get before, and what was the TD... What was the total TDT before? When you look at where the TDT was then and where the TDT has grown, again, knowing that COVID is an anomaly and knowing that COVID is something, God willing, will never repeat itself in our lifetimes, it's not that much of an increase looking at where the TDT was back in '12 when they last got a grant to where it is now. Given how, you know, how much of the overall pot they got then, it's not that they're asking for us to give them 50% or 80% more of the overall, of the overall pot.
Do you want to try and make a motion?
Yeah, I think I've got a motion. I think Commissioner Smith seconded it.
Got a motion and second? All right. So I'm going to go ahead and call the motion. Commissioner Zonka, did you want to say something?
I did.
Okay.
I just, you know, if there wasn't money to be made in these air shows, the organizations wouldn't put them on. So just keep that in mind as we rewrite a $100,000 check. And I would just ask that the TDC, if the Melbourne air show comes and asks for money, that we offer them the same opportunity if we're going to approve this today.
I agree. I think once we establish this, we need to establish this for the air shows that do this type of thing as well.
Just to keep it fair.
I agree. Totally agree.
I think the point of the hotels, I hadn't even taken that into consideration, but boy, these guys have been clobbered.
Yeah.
And so this is an opportunity for them, and April's a good month, to fill their places up, and that would be like a godsend for them.
Yeah. So I'm going to vote in favor of this as well. But I, as like Commissioner Zonka just mentioned, Mr. Cranis, I would like for this to stay not... All these air shows receive this kind of love so that we're able to bring the tourism through the whole county when they show up.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's a good way to do an analysis where we can look at each show, see what it's going to deliver in terms of ROI, and then make an award that's commensurate with that. The Melbourne show is a gated show, so it's a little different. It's not open to the public. So it's a little low... It's a little lower number.
They sit in... I'm just telling you, people come over to my other business, sit in the parking lots, and have to pay for it where we are. So I mean, it's...
But the volume of people that it generates is much lower than a beach show. A beach air show is something that's more significant, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe as we read district, we can give us part of that.
Everyone into airport?
That was quite a segue.
I think we should go by district numbers. Let us pick where we... I'm just kidding. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 3-2 with Commissioner Zonka and Tobias in opposition. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move to item J2.
Commissioners, this is a request to accept the assignment of the lease for the Complex Cafe at the Government Center and at the Harriet... Harry and Harriet V. Moore Justice Center. It's requested by the current Lisi, and he's also asking as part of this for forbearance until June 1st of the current rent. As you may know, the facility at the courthouse, due to the very low volume of people that are going through there, that facility has been closed for several months and will continue to do so for a period of time. But under, if the board approves this assignment effective June 1st, the full lease amount of 1,200 per month for the rent, maintenance, and utilities will commence again.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We are moving into item J3. Commissioners, I know you have it in your packet. I believe the staff made some good recommendations. I don't have any cards, so I think it might be appropriate to approve with staff recommendations.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb?
Second.
Oops, he beat you. Commissioner Zonka, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Moving into item J4. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this was discussed previously, however, there's a little bit of a change.[1621.20] However, there's a little bit of a change. But as stated in the agenda report, the family of Mr. Sam Lopez has made it known that they would prefer having a pavilion at Ponce de Leon, a landing named after him, rather than the entire park. I think this is acceptable. In reference, this would be about $200 for a wooden plaque. It's amazing to think that this man had such sway, that he was able to fund a $60,000 statue, be built to a man who never stepped foot in a park, as well as get a flag to a U.S. territory, despite the express wishes of the sitting district commissioner. On a side note, District 1, you're getting America in Samoa. District 2, you're getting a flag in Guam, from Guam. District 4, Northern Mariana. And District 5, the U.S. Virgin Islands. I just wanted to give you a bit of geography there. I had to look up what the other ones were. But in all seriousness, Mr. Lopez was a dedicated public servant and a strong advocate, and he will be missed. A dedication to him at this location would be very fitting. So, a motion to name and erect a plaque with his name on it, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, second to that before you made it.
Perfect.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. And I really have to quit laughing at your jokes, I get in trouble every time I do. I don't know if people know how funny you are. You have such a straight face, right? Okay, let me move into item J5. I have a lot of cards on these. I think it might be an advantage if we have discussion about it. Some of you might decide you don't need to have conversations. I am gonna start, Commissioner Tobias, with this, Commissioner Loeb, because it's his agenda item. Okay, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a simple policy, looking out for the well-being of the citizens of Brevard County that would make a vaccination a necessity for first responders that have direct contact with the public. There are certain accommodations made for things as stipulated by law, and that's the Act, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm just gonna jump in. I didn't support a mandatory mask. I'm probably not gonna, I'm not gonna support a mandatory vaccine, but I do get your point. Something that concerns me is that, right now, if you get one person in a place that gets COVID, everybody's out for two weeks. And so, then there's overtime involved and extra funds for that. So, I think we do have a funding issue, and I can't help always looking at the numbers. I think it's an issue. So, I would just request that if you have any opportunity to get a vaccine, that you would maybe really consider that, because it saves people around you, and, because you're in a tight quarters and homes you go into as well. So, I think, I think it's a reasonable ask to do so, so I am, I'm just gonna request that. But I'm not gonna support a mandatory vaccine. And Commissioner Loeb, you're next, sir.
I've got a few thoughts with respect to this. So, first off, I mean, I'll cut to the chase, give you the conclusion before the reasoning. I'm not gonna support this. I want to tell you why, and I've heard some things that are good, and I've heard some things that are bad from people, both in support and in opposition to this. First, and, you know, you can prioritize this however you'd like.
You're next.
There is a huge difference between the amount of data that's out there in terms of the effectiveness of the vaccine on preventing someone from developing severe COVID-related illness, and keeping them by extension from dying or from going on a ventilator. There's a difference between that and showing that they have an inability to carry it and transmit it to others. For me, I'm not even gonna consider supporting something like this until there is solid evidence showing that someone being vaccinated prevents them from being a carrier, or substantially lessens the likelihood that they're gonna be a carrier and transmit it to others. My general life view, whether you want to say it's political, religious, otherwise, moral-based, if someone wants to do something that's stupid and take a danger onto themselves, by and large, if it's not hurting anyone else, do whatever you want. You wanna, you know, go and shark dive and, you know, nibble on the thing's fin? You can try it and see how it works out. We don't tell our firefighters that they can't skydive. We don't tell our firefighters that they can't go visit, you know, the site of a nuclear reactor explosion. If they want to do that, and it's lawful for them to do it, or not do it, that's okay. You know, they're entitled to make their own risk decisions, especially when it only impacts them. If they get sick as a result of a risk position, a risk decision that they make, then that's fine. They've got, you know, whatever paid time off they're entitled to, and if they run out of PTO, then they can use unpaid time off. You know, the bottom line is, I'm not gonna force a needle into someone's arm without there being an incredible set of extenuating circumstances, and we're not even approaching that here. I can't think of what it would take to do that. What I could tell you, though, for me to support anything along these lines, though, I could see perhaps requiring it for new hires, assuming we have, which we don't at this point, solid evidence showing specifically that it prevents people from carrying it and transmitting it to others. I've not seen that. As a result, I'm not gonna support this. What I will tell you, though, just to kind of point out that there have been arguments in favor of my viewpoint on this, that I just flatly don't agree with, the argument that there's something unconstitutional about this is absolutely dead wrong. I'm not supporting this, not because I think it's unconstitutional, I think it's unquestionably constitutional. You know, certainly, anyone that wants to inquire of Ms. Bentley is welcome to do that. You know, just as I don't feel that I'm qualified to make medical, you know, medical decisions that require a certain level of expertise, there are certain fields that are licensed, regulated professions for a reason. I will tell you, the folks that are running around saying that this is unconstitutional, by and large, are not attorneys. They're just wrong. It's simply that, that simple. If you look at what's been challenged and what's been evaluated by the courts, they're not successful. And it's not because all these folks are evil, liberal, biased judges. You know, you're talking about people that are lifelong Republicans, that look at and apply the law as it's written. They're just wrong. So, again, you know, there's nothing showing, to my satisfaction at least, that there is any sort of mucosal immunity. There's nothing that suggests, that I've seen to my satisfaction, that there is solid evidence indicating that folks that are vaccinated cease to have the ability to carry it and transmit it to others. I'm just, there's no way I'm gonna support this. So, certainly, you know, I respect wherever, wherever anyone else may be, but to me, I'm just not gonna support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna say pretty much what Commissioner Loeb said, except I'm not, I'm far less eloquent, which means I'm speaking a lot less words.
[laughing]
As conservatives, we believe less government is better government. I think we all agree with that. And as such, we shouldn't be telling employees that they should have to get a needle if they don't want one. I would encourage them to. I think it's a prudent thing to do, but it's their choice, not ours. And with that comes whatever ramifications come with it. But I, for me, that's the bottom line. So, I don't think it's a requirement that we should impose as, as part of their employment. We just can't do that.
Commissioner Zonka?
Yeah, I'm clearly not gonna support this either, and I think the fact that I wouldn't support a mask mandate kind of gave it away. But, you know, my own employer, I'm a nurse practitioner, and my own employer's not requiring that their employees get it. Are we safe? Absolutely. We wear N95 masks. I myself have been vaccinated, but it was my choice. And I'm happy and proud that I was vaccinated, and I think that I am, you know, doing my responsible thing, not just as a provider, but as a member of the community. So, I would encourage people to get vaccinated. We not long ago passed an resolution, and I did not agree that we incentivize people who do get, pay them to get vaccinated. I think that that's silly. I think people should get vaccinated if they want to, and I think they should because they, it's the right thing to do. But, you know, making them do it is not, I don't think is a good decision, and I don't think it's a responsible decision. I think it's a personal choice. It's a medical decision that we should be left to make on our own, so I obviously am not gonna support it, so that's where I stand.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, just so that everybody knows, I think it's four against and one for, and I have a lot of cards on this, so you guys know where the vote's gonna be. So, I just want to mention that before we get started here. So, Commissioner Loeb?
One thing I did neglect to mention, I apologize. I just want to say this, because I know there are probably a lot of firefighters that are watching this.
You're gonna say it five different ways, one thing.
I promise I'll say it no more than twice. One and a half times. No, I just want to point out to the folks that are, that are first responders, that are eligible for that incentive-based program, please do get vaccinated. If you're ambivalent about it, please do. I'll tell you, as soon as I'm entitled to get vaccinated, I'll let them stick me in the arm. If I need to have them stick me, you know, in the, in the left or the right rear end cheek, I will let them do that in order to get vaccinated. The bottom line is, I don't want anyone to take my not being willing to mandate this to a whole class of employees, as me not thinking that the vaccine is a good thing, or me not thinking that it's beneficial. I really, I do believe that it's beneficial. I, I would encourage my wife to get vaccinated. I would encourage my parents to get vaccinated. If I had kids other than the furry four-legged variety, I would encourage them, if they met the requirements, to get vaccinated too. You know, please, I know that there was a poll that showed that not quite a third of folks that are in fire rescue that responded, ended up, yeah, I see, not quite a third of, a third of the folks that responded were planning on getting vaccinated, knowing that it was free. My, my hope is that by having made those funds available, $75 for each shot for the two-dose series, so Pfizer and Moderna, or a hundred bucks, once the Johnson &amp; Johnson comes through for a single-dose shot, if you're ambivalent, or if you're thinking, oh gee, I'll do it at some point, I'm hoping that that will kind of get people over that hump, where they're just not sure, or perhaps, you know, they just need some little extra push. But please, you know, if you have the ability to get vaccinated, if there's not a medical reason that you shouldn't do it, I would really encourage you to do it. You know, not, not just talking about the possibility it may impact folks' ability to carry it, but really for your own sakes and for your family's sake, because if you're down and you're out, and you're not able to respond to calls because you have this or anything else, it really, it's an issue that I think is largely preventable. So, just please consider it, folks.
So, he said, if you can't get a vaccine, you should.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call these cards. If you're cool, if you just wave, but if you want to come up, you certainly may. Ms. Marie Roderson? Good. Okay, Jade Zalwinski?
Emily.
Oh, okay. Melissa Johnson? Wesley Ryan?
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Denise Gabel? You look like you wanted to say something. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you again for taking our thoughts into consideration. I know a lot of you received a lot of emails about this, and I appreciate you listening and, you know, once again, supporting residents. I think overwhelmingly, people were not in support of this, just because it is a mandated thing, and I'm really proud to be a Brevard resident, and I just want to thank you all for all the work that you do. And I know this is not an easy job, but we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I have Mr. Michael Bramson. Seriously, you always like coming up, no? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I do have some questions for Mr. Bramson.
Oh, yes, sir. For who, too? For Mr. Bramson?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Bramson, come on.
That's why they pay you the big bucks.
Thank you. With your permission.
Oh, certainly, sir.
Mr. Bramson, thanks for wearing a mask. Do you want to tell us why, why you are wearing a mask?
Sure.
You don't have to take it off.
Wear a mask is part of the PP within the requirements of certain suggestions when I'm on the job, within six feet, when you make a transition from where I was sitting to here. Who knew who was gonna stand up in front of me?
Thank you. Would you agree that it's acceptable for, to require EMS employees to wear masks while interacting with the public as a condition of employment?
Repeat that? I'm not, I don't have a, as a president of the union, this is gonna be an operational policy. You need to address this to the operations.
You're not answering?
No, no, don't talk out.
You asked me a question if I felt a policy?
So, would you agree, so, sorry, would you agree that it's acceptable to require EMS employees to wear masks while interacting with the public as a condition of employment?
Yeah, I've answered that question. It's a policy for our administrators.
Okay, how many, are you aware of how many Brevard County residents have died due to COVID-19?
I do not have those numbers in front of me.
I'll help you. The New York Times, yesterday, 722. Are you aware of, we just hit a milestone today, are you aware of how many Americans have died?
Do not have those numbers in front of me.
500,000, one-half a million. Are you aware of how many people have died in Brevard due to taking the vaccine?
I do not have those numbers in front of me.
Zero. Are you aware of, according to New York Times, how many have died in the United States?
Once again, I do not prepare those numbers.
Zero. Okay, I'd like to reference a letter from your organization, the International Association of Firefighters.
Thank you.
Which I'm sure you have a copy of.
Are you good, sir?
Sure.
Are you okay? You're good?
Yeah.
Aside from the risk of an unvaccinated first responder that they directly post the public, according to the President of the International Association of Firefighters, Harold Schlatenberger, 19 firefighters have died. Nearly 150 have been hospitalized, and 30,000 have been exposed to the virus. He states, and you have the letter here, quote, "All this, despite PPE use and rigorous procedures, makes vaccinating the firefighters and emergency medical personnel all that much more important. The virus not only places the lives and health of our first responders at risk, it also poses a risk to the larger community, as well as the firefighters responding to the emergency." The question is this: How do you respond to the national president of your own union stating that your members being unvaccinated poses a threat to the public, as well as your own employees?
I cannot speak on the general president's comments or documentation that he submitted, and I do not have a copy of the document you've sent to the other commissioners.
Mr. Bramson, just while you're looking as well, there's nothing that suggests that the union, that I see in, in looking at this the first time, suggests that this ought to be something mandated. So, if you see that there, you know, certainly, I'd be interested in hearing too, but I don't see that your union's taking a position requiring mandating it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hold on, real quick, I don't want any talking out there at all, okay? We, okay, thank you. It's not comfortable, but we just, sir, go ahead.
Another reference to a letter, according to the President of IAFF, once again, your union, quote, "Absent adequate vaccination, responders will continue to be subject to lengthy quarantines while they're exposed to COVID-19 positive individuals, imposing significant costs on local governments as they backfill positions, operate understaffed, increasing response times, and negatively impacting public safety." Mr. Bramson, you often complain about overtime. How many of your employees have missed work due to isolation, causing another to have to make up that shift? Do you know the cost or the number of hours due to that fact?
I do not have that in front of me, no.
Would you be surprised to hear it is 13,547 hours, at a cost to taxpayers of $348,532?
I'm sorry, is there a question?
Would you be surprised, was the question?
I'm absolutely not surprised by those figures, no.
Okay. Madam Chair, I continue with Maria Stahl, who's the Director of Public Health. His policy deals with direct health, posed to the public by certain first responders as defined by law. Maria Stahl, again, the Director of Brevard County Health Department, and the top state official in charge of managing the pandemic, has made it clear that such a threat is posed by EMTs. In an email, she stated, and I quote, "I concur that EMTs not being vaccinated could definitely result in the transmission of a virus, which could result in the death of a resident." Mr. Bramson, how do you respond to the fact that you not being vaccinated could result in the death of one of the very people it is your duty to protect?
The question at hand is, how do I feel about the lack of vaccination causing a death of another?
According to, I'll read it again, according to Ms. Stahl, "EMTs not being vaccinated could definitely result in the transmission of a virus, which could result in the death of a resident." That is a quote from Maria Stahl, who is, again, the Director of Brevard County Health Department.
I have no answer for that question, I have no opinion on that question.
You have no opinion as to the safety of the very people that you're entrusted to protect?
I have no opinion on the lack of vaccine on a first responder causing the death of another.
Wow, okay. Ms. Stahl went on to say that, quote, "In Brevard, 88% of deaths are due to those over age 65, and 57% are those for long-term care facilities. Brevard EMS respond very frequently to that age group and to those facilities." Why would your perceived risk, or your squeamishness with needles, be more important than one of our grandparents who's in a long-term care facility?
I don't even understand that question.
Okay, maybe, maybe this will be better. I pulled up the IAF Manual of Common Procedures, and looked at the Code of Ethics. And the Code of Ethics says, and I quote, "All members will never allow personal feelings, nor danger to self," and I don't think the shot is dangerous, but that's what it says, "to deter them from their responsibilities." It goes on to say, "The responsibilities are to safeguard and preserve life." Maria Stahl has said that not getting a vaccination will result in the death of a resident that you are in charge of protecting. Does that concern you? Yes or no?
Yes.
Does it concern you that you have the ability, through vaccination, to prevent that from happening?
I do not have legal counsel here, and I refrain from answering these lines of questions. If there's something more direct to clarify the motion on the table during discussion, which I believe has not been seconded, I'd be more than happy for clarification reasons only. Otherwise, I would like to be excused.
Yes, sir.
Your discretion, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I continue? Madam Chair, may I continue?
Oh, you have the floor, sir.
This is no laughing matter, we've talked about mask mandates. Those were on private citizens in private businesses. This is serious. At your time of need, you call on someone to help save your life, and we have Maria Stahl, a public health expert, and the Director of Brevard County, saying that this will result in the deaths of Brevard County residents. This is not a mandate. Firefighters were not drafted to be firefighters, they have options to go elsewhere, and if they put their own concerns over that of the people that they're sworn to protect, then I encourage them to go elsewhere. Ask yourself this question, and I don't know that I'm going to have the support here, but if your grandma, or mom, or sister is in a long-term care facility, and a first responder shows up, would you rather have that person vaccinated or not vaccinated? And you know what? If you don't care, then by all means, vote against this. But the reality of the situation, comparing a mask mandate on a private business, which I do not support, and one on a government in which no one has, there's no conscription here, it's, it's a fallacy that is not even worth mentioning. This is extremely serious, it's unfortunate that we even have to do this, that healthcare providers are not wanting to get a vaccine that not only could help save them, but help save the residents. This is not a conservative or liberal issue, this is an issue based on fact and science. And, and if you're not, you don't need to believe me, believe, believe the President of their very union, believe the Director of Public Health, but God forbid, I certainly hope that one of your family members is not in a healthcare facility in which an unvaccinated first responder shows up and potentially leads to the outcomes that are listed here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and do the rest of the cards first. Commissioner, I know that we all have strong opinions on this, I'm going to ask that maybe we don't repeat the same ones over and over, just so that we can get through this, but I'd like to go ahead and call Ms. Deborah Jaffe, and then I have Ms. Katie Dyer. Dyer, thank you.
Thank you for having me. I would like to start by saying that I am a firefighter wife and a veteran myself, and I've put my life on the line for our country, so has my husband, who is a firefighter. And for someone like Mr. Tobia to claim that these firefighters do not serve our citizens throughout this pandemic is completely bullying and discriminatory. I also know of a firefighter right now that took the second vaccine because he chose, and he's sick, and he's still on shift, so for him to say that no one wants to take it is also false. When the survey was done, only 60 to 80 firefighters completed that survey out of 400. So, the data's not even there, and it was before the vaccine was even available, the survey was sent out in December, and the vaccine was available a day later. So, little to no data was even given to these firefighters when they were asked if they would take the vaccine. As of right now, a lot of the firefighters are taking the vaccine by their choice. I don't think it's fair for him to stand here and bully our union representative and our firefighters who are still out there regardless, doing their job. He goes on to say that this is their personal preference, and that they choose their personal preference above the safety of the citizens they serve, a statement that indicates that our firefighters are not citizens themselves, but government property. Do we really truly believe that? They're government property, they're also citizens that need to be protected and have rights? In reference to how the policy should be enforced, Mr. Tobia suggests that if a firefighter denies the vaccine, they can simply leave the county as working for them is a privilege and not a right. There are so many firefighters that have been here for years, they're so close to retirement, and you're basically telling them to leave because they choose to not vaccinate, because they choose to wait for more research and for actual FDA approval? This vaccine is still in trial, you're asking for way more than what, and you say it's not a laughing matter, it absolutely is not, as you can tell, it affects my life, it affects my children, and my spouse, and as I can tell during your interviews, you are the one laughing, when you were stating that they were threats to our citizens. The Employee Equal Opportunity Commission clearly states that employers must properly consider exemptions and reasonable accommodations before attempting any terminations or disciplinary actions, so therefore termination would be an absolute last resort, unlike what Mr. Tobia has suggested multiple times in this meeting and in other interviews. Mandating the vaccine would also create additional budget issues to our fire department, which already struggles to retain employees. If employees experience adverse reactions, the county would be expected to compensate them for the recovery time, and in the event that the employees experience a severe reaction that required permanent disability, this would pose a huge risk to Brevard as an employer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Great, Ms. Katie Dyer. I said that wrong again, didn't I? Okay.
Great job, Deborah. I didn't come as prepared as she did.
Just state your name for me, and we'll-
My name is Katie Dyer, thank you. I would just like to say, after I read the article that quoted John Tabia as saying that they were threats and that they were being selfish for, for not getting the vaccine, the vaccine works so well that it doesn't allow them to get it or keeps them from death, then those citizens have a right to choose themselves. And if it works well, as you say it does, then there's no reason that a fireman needs to do it because the person has already protected themselves from COVID. Also, they do wear masks. Mask mandation is for every company, and I'd be fine with them, obviously they do that because it's part of their PPE, but those supposedly work so well also, and that is just something you can take on and take off. A vaccine is something that you put in your body that can, has side effects, I've seen people have Bell's palsy from it, there are other unknowns, it's brand new, and at this point in time, to, to even dare say how selfish they are, it, it boils my bones. The way you acted up there, I'm appalled. The way you treat firemen, not on, not only this issue, but other issues, you clearly have zero respect for them, and as a firewife, it just, I'm sorry, it makes me very upset. Vaccine, vaccination mandations at this point in time is unacceptable, I appreciate all of you who see that, I, and thank you for not passing this.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Commissioners, we're going to make one more run of this, and then I'm going to call it. Commissioner Loeb, you have your light on, you're sure shot.
I appreciate that, and I, I'm just going to take this off, I am well, well beyond six feet, probably closer to 12 feet from the nearest person. I have a few thoughts. You know, I think it's a false equivalency to talk about mask mandates versus mandatory vaccinations for people. There is a huge difference in terms of the bodily integrity of someone, you're physically piercing someone's body, you're not talking about them wearing something that at worst is a little bit uncomfortable. People don't get anaphylaxis from wearing this, people don't get Guillain-Barre syndrome, which we actually had a firefighter get as a result of getting a shot, FYI, and that's just for folks that don't know, my understanding is that's where you have your immune system attacking your own nerves, so there, there are real potential risks, not to say that they, that they're common, not to say that they outweigh the benefits, I'm not saying that at all, but no, no one dies from wearing a mask. There's a, you know, there's no equivalence between saying that someone that supports people being responsible in wearing masks, whether on or off the job, that therefore they ought to support sticking a needle in someone's arm, where there, there really are genuine risks, even if there are good benefits. I also heard something that either I misheard or was misstated at least a couple times after it was initially brought up. I heard first that Maria Stahl, and frankly, I wasn't familiar until very recently with that email, suggested that, that firefighters not getting vaccinated, or first responders not getting vaccinated, might or may result in the deaths of one or more citizens. Then I heard that conflated to will result in the deaths and will cause the deaths. I don't have the data, again, I, I've not heard from Commissioner Tabia any percent of immunity that folks get as far as being carriers or being able to transmit it to others. You know, I'm not a scientist, but I've, I've had conversations with enough of them that talk about this mucosal immunity, you're not getting the vaccine in your nose disproportionately, from what I understand, your immune system is mounting more of a systemic response, it's not necessarily doing the same job at, at preventing the virus from attaching to those very areas that you make people wear masks or people choose to wear masks to avoid transmitting it from. It's not that it's jumping out of your blood through some science fiction mechanism, it's coming generally from your nose or generally from your mouth and infecting other people. And I, I simply have not, it's not that I'm disregarding the data, it's not that I don't believe the data, I just have not seen any substantial data, data from any decent-sized study that shows that there's any particular percentage that, that reduces the transmissibility from getting this. I mean, I, I can tell you, I had a conversation with my own brother, I've got two nieces, I've got a pretty small family, they live out in Dallas, Texas, and they've had a lot of problems with COVID there. I usually go at least twice a year to Dallas to see my, you know, my two nieces, because really, they're, they're part of a small family that's there, and if I don't see them, I really don't see much of my family, and I had a conversation with my brother recently where I said to him, "Hey Neil, if my wife and I at some point in the, in the coming months end up getting our first vaccine and our second vaccine, if we have the second vaccine, we let a couple weeks go by to build up an immunity, you know, would you consider having us out so that we can see the, the girls again?" And his response was, which makes sense, and it actually caused me to look at this in the first place, "Well, you know, do you have any idea if you still would be able to carry it? You know, we understand that, you know, I understand that you, you probably aren't going to get sick as a result of that, if they're 94 or 95% effective at preventing you from getting ill, you know, you're going to be on an aircraft, you're going to get exposed to god knows what coming out to Dallas, and then you're going to be around the kids, so are you then, you know, going to turn around and give them what you're not going to get sick from yourself, having been on the aircraft? I don't know." So guess what? I haven't seen, you know, I haven't seen my nieces, and when, when my time is up to get vaccinated, I will get vaccinated, but if there's not data to show that I can't turn around and transmit it to them, then guess what? It'll be a while longer until I see my family, and I, I don't like it, but it is what it is. My, my point is, you know, saying that vaccines are effective is great when you're talking about preventing you from being put on a ventilator, preventing you from dying as a result of COVID, but I've not heard from anyone based on any science that vaccines are effective at preventing you from transmitting it to others. And to me, you know, I have moral and ethical problems mandating it even with that factored in, assuming that that, that is proven at some point in the future to be the case, but it's not even worth considering before getting to that. And as, as far as, as the line of questioning went to Lieutenant Bramson, I'll, I'll tell you, you know, I'm not going to ask you guys to live in a bubble, if I didn't want you to have any chance of transmitting anything to anyone ever, I would say walk around in a hazmat suit, don't kiss your wife, don't do that, or for, for the women that work for BCFR, you know, don't give your husband a hug, you know, that's not reasonable, I can't tell you, you know, stay away from your kids, keep your kids socially distanced at home, because we don't want you to have any chance whatsoever of transmitting something. People have to be allowed to make certain decisions for themselves, and to me, I don't have a problem telling firefighters, "Look, guys, you're going to wear this, you're going to wear it whether you like it or not, but I'm not going to tell you I'm going to stick something in your arm that you didn't know when you were brought on board, we were going to make you get stuck in your arm." You know, I, I personally have less of a concern that it hasn't received full FDA authorization in the sense that normal vaccines would, I, I'm not going to allow that to dissuade, you know, certainly myself from getting vaccinated, but I can't force my risk tolerance on other people like that, I, I just don't think it's appropriate. I think that even though that the, the side effects, as far as the severe ones are uncommon, you know, I've heard that 30-something percent of people that get the second, I believe it's the Moderna shot, have some form of side effect. Now, if it's just a little sore arm, or, or something that, that passes, let's say they were, they have a degree higher than standard body temperature, I would be fine with that if I get a second shot down the road and I end up with that, guess what? It was my choice, and if my arm hurts a little, or, you know, if I, if I run 99.6, so be it, I've made the decision, but I, I can't make other people do that, especially when we have no evidence to suggest any particular improvement in, in reducing that transmissibility. So, you know, do I want you guys to get sick as firefighters? Hell no, I don't want you guys to get sick, but I, I can't make you do something to put my risk tolerance on you when there's absolutely no proven benefit in terms of the transmissibility.
Commissioner Zonka.
That was long, but I think you sort of said, with a couple of points I had written down, that, you know, line of questioning to, to Mark Bramson was unfortunate, because I think there was a lot of leading questions that kind of put him in a box, and he can't speak as an individual versus, he's a union representative, so that was not really fair. That email from Maria Stahl was prefaced with a very leading email, "Could, you know, this result in the death of a resident?", and her response was that it could result. Well, I could get into a car accident by just getting in my car, and I'm not saying, I'm not diminishing, I'm not diminishing it at all, COVID's a serious, serious business. Why I was vaccinated, yeah, I took a risk, but that was a risk I chose to take, not a risk that my employer made me take. So that's, that's, again, my big, my big crux of all this, I mean, it's, we're not talking polio, this is a whole different type of, it's a different type of vaccine, it's an mRNA vaccine, and that's a whole other set of very long-winded discussion you probably don't want to hear. But, you know, there's no guarantee, I think Commissioner Loeb said it a few different ways, there's no guarantee on, on transmission, and I think that that is also a big deal. A lot of our firefighters have been out due to exposure, due to being sick with COVID themselves, so I mean, it's not just, you know, there's nothing that they could have done to prevent that, and what is the policy going to be on that if you're vaccinated? I know I still wear my mask every public place that I attend, by choice I wear my mask, and by requirement, depending on what government building or otherwise, or my employer requires me, so be responsible, I would just encourage everyone, and when you feel safe enough as a personal decision to get the vaccine, and we've vetted out all the, you know, issues that people have had, and you, you can make a educated, an educated decision on whether or not it's best for you and your family. So, again, I, I think, I think what happened here today was unfortunate as far as that discussion went. And there's this Firefighter Association President Letter that Mr. Bramson didn't have a chance to look at before he was hammered with, is asking that the governor's association to prioritize EMT and firefighters, it's not asking for governments to place mandates. So that's it, I'm done, I'm off my soapbox.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I just want to mention the openness of freedom of speech here, it's a really good thing, it's not always comfortable conversation, but it's something we should always fight to maintain in this country, and a lot of times, I, I think it's under, it's under attack right now, but it's just so important that people are allowed to say what they want to say, don't agree with it all the time, but it's just an important thing. We brought the mask and the vaccines, and, and I know they're like two different things, but I, I really disagree with that. People say it doesn't lower the oxygen rate, but stick a towel over your mouth and see how long you stay conscious, it definitely makes an effect on you with masks. I have asthma, very uncomfortable, but I still wear it because I don't want to panic other people, and, and so there, there's a reason for all that, but I just, I just don't feel good about mandating anything to anyone, and it's hard to mandate personal responsibility, I just think you're, you're just going to have to pay attention to what you think you, you should do. I, my personal thing, I think everybody should get vaccinated, but hey, I'm old enough, I spent enough time being really, really ill with the flu through my life, I ain't doing it anymore, and you can't even get, most people get flu shots either, but this stuff works, out of all the med, I'm just going to give you a little, little motherly talk here, out of all the medical advancements, I think, over the past 100 years, Commissioner Zonka, I think vaccines are amazing, you know, we have all these other things, but they, they actually have you build up your own immunities, but you're going to have to get comfortable with that, people are afraid of stuff, you can't make them do it, I totally understand, but I'm just going to maybe encourage you not to be so, so afraid of it, if you would go ahead and take a risk, I'll, I'll do it as well. A couple of bits of, of data, I asked between all of the firefighters that have had COVID or been vaccinated, vaccinated now, there's 33% now that are probably good to go, so that leaves the other 66%, and I would ask the firefighters if, if they're really truly afraid of doing shots, that you come up with something to reduce the cost of the exposure cost, get, get a little more creative with, with how to avoid that, because if you get one person that's been exposed, it just makes everybody quarantine, and that's really tough, because we have got to get this economy up and going, and I think the vaccine is a good shot of doing that, so I'm just going to throw out those thoughts to you. In my own personal family, 70% of every office I'm working in now has had COVID, 70% of my family now that I'm around all the time has had COVID, I'm one of the 30, so I'm glad because COVID hurts, I've watched people go through this, it has been very painful, they've all been healthy enough that nobody's, you know, had severe long-time effects with it, but they were all, you know, really sick for a couple weeks, and I've got one daughter, it's a really big baby, and it was kind of tough on me having to take care of her, because she gets a little scratch, it's terrible, so you can imagine how bad COVID was in our lives for her for a while. So I, I'm just going to encourage people to, to just maybe reconsider that and, and consider doing that, or maybe think of ways to, to up your, your game here as, as far as being able to, to spread this. I know Commissioner Smith, he's had his vaccines, yes, and none of us qualify for it yet.
I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon. Are you suggesting that I'm over?
You're awful dapper for it, sir, so just, I just want to, just encourage everybody to, to maybe reconsider that, you know, because it's, it's, it's just a good tool, but again, it's, it's, it's your choice, but I think it might be a good choice. So Commissioner Tabia, did you want to make a motion, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I certainly don't want to put you guys in the same position that our first responders will be putting residents in, that, that's just not fair, so I'm not going to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we, we have no motion, so I'm going to call this, this topic over for now, and I have no more public comment cards, so we're getting ready to move into board reports, and county manager, sir?
I have no report.
No report. County attorney?
No report.
Commissioner Loeb, District 2. Commissioner Loeb, District 2.
All right. I think this may surprise a couple folks, but I actually do want to thank Commissioner Tabia for bringing that item up. I completely disagree with the direction he was going with it, but I respect the fact that he was willing to do something that certainly he must have known was going to be wildly unpopular, because he believed it was the right thing to do. So, you know, certainly, I don't want Commissioner Tabia or anyone else to feel discouraged to bring items like that. You know, there's a chance that what may seem crazy to someone on one occasion may not strike someone else that way. So if there's something that comes up in the future, you know, certainly, I would just encourage you to put it on there. I think it's good to strive to make big change when there are new and novel issues that come up. So, you know, my hat's off to him, at least with respect to that portion of it, but the rest of it, not so much so. But thank you, guys.
Commissioner Tabia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to put it up for discussion at our next meeting, just to give you guys some heads up. And that's dealing with the process of redistricting. I know many of us have started to make our nominations, and they thankfully have all gone through. But maybe staff can provide us with a little bit of a timeline. And I know it's not them. We're so far behind at the federal level, getting that new data for us even to begin any of this stuff. But I've certainly have gotten a couple calls from my nominees and from some other folks. So if we could have a five or a 10-minute discussion on that, I'm just going to just put it up there, but just so we can communicate in public, obviously. So please expect to see that one on the agenda next time. I'm not going to ask for anything. It's just literally a point of discussion, Madam Chair.
Good idea, sir. There's a lot of confusion out there.
There is, and if we're all on the same page, I mean, it's very hard for us to keep on saying, "We're waiting for the federal government to send us." There's really nothing, you know, that we can do. We're on top of things, we're just waiting for the key component right now. So that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As your representative on the Central Florida Expressway Authority, I just want to give you a couple tidbits of where we are. I've talked to you folks before about the visitor toll pass. Now we have a self-serve visitor toll pass. We have vending machines at the airport, or you can reserve with your iPhone or your Android phone a visitor pass. And we've made the return very easy. We have a toll pass at the OIA drop box. So when you get, before you jump back on your airplane, there will be drop boxes around the airport that you can put that visitor toll pass in, or you can mail it back in. And I wanted to point out that we're the first in the world to do this type of thing. And it has a benefit to the visitors as well, which I'm sure make them happy when they visit a new area, that they get a 20% discount on their toll passes versus going through a rental agency where they get administration fees tacked on and pay full amount. So that is first. And Logan, do you have my PowerPoint available?
There we go.
I just wanted to point out that our mid-year budget review, we just had that. And next slide, please. This will give you an idea of the kind of funds that we generate through our tolls in the Central Florida Expressway Authority. Year-to-date budget was 180, almost 181 million. Actual, to date, was 237 million, and that's a variance of 31% over what we anticipated. We were at the same disadvantage everyone else is with COVID, because we really didn't know what effect it was going to have on the amount of people driving on our roads. For example, the first month after COVID struck, tolls were down 59% in one month. That's huge. Driving in this Orlando area in April was like driving in Orlando 30 years ago. There wasn't anybody on the road. So we really didn't know what to expect, so we hired an outside company to come up with these projections. So as you can see, we've exceeded our projections all the way through. But the numbers are fairly impressive. Net revenues after debt service, 92 million bucks, which is 185% increase over what the projection was. And our work plan expenses were $250 million, and that was $58,000 under our projections. So we were above projections by 22% on that. And next slide. So in short, we have 864 days of cash on hand, our reserve balance of $164,472,000 is in the bank, and we have construction fund cash on hand of $368 million. So we have lots of money. That's the short version. Thank you.
You are the right man for that, sir.
Oh, and that's it.
Go ahead.
You guys have had a long day as it is. We're good.
You sure?
Yes, I'm sure.
You've been the quietest down there.
Oh, one more thing. I'd like to ask for prayers for my chief aide, Pat Woodard, and his family. He is having emergency surgery this afternoon.
Certainly. Vice Chair Zonka.
No report.
No report. And I'm going to say no report as well. This meeting is adjourned. You guys have a great day.
You, too.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.